I'd like to call this meeting of the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners to order. Alright, first up, we have prayer and pledge, and we have Pastor Bob Trimble here to lead us in the prayer. So Pastor Trimble, if you could come forward, start us off, that'd be great.
Let's pray. Father, we're so thankful to be here today, to be alive, to have life that you have given us. We have so much to be thankful for. All of us ought to be thankful that we live in a free country. We live in the United States of America, the greatest country on the face of the earth. Thank you for our forefathers who established this country on Christian values, and on the Bible, the word of God. Thank you for being our Creator. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, and all things that are in there. I read in First John, or the Gospel of John, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God, and all things were created by Him." And the Word became flesh, that is Jesus, and dwelt among us; we beheld His glory, the glory of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace, true. And You've come, Lord, to give us life, and life more abundant. What a privilege, what a joy it is to know that we have a living God that loves us, cares for us, and wants us to glorify Him. That's the very purpose of life. If you've missed that purpose, people, you have missed the very purpose of your existence. Thank you for this Easter season we've just come through, celebrating the Passover lamb who died on an old rugged cross to pay the price for sin and sinners like me. You died and was buried on the third day, was resurrected, and you later ascended into heaven. And now at the right hand of the Father, you make intercession for the saints. Oh, thank you, Lord, I'm so thankful for your goodness and grace. Now I ask your blessings today on this gathering. Help us to reflect the image of Jesus and showing forth fruitful conduct of a Christian, that we are to love one another, and we are to exalt you and to put you first. We love you so much. Thank you for loving us, being so good to us. So give us a good day. May we be found pleasing in your sight, doing your will above all things. Bless each one here today, each speaker. May we speak out of love and appreciation and blessings you've sent us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Alright, please rise for the pledge. Alright, the clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cosby.
Here.
This is Evil.
Here.
Mr. Zialstra.
Here.
Mr. Bonnema.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Chirpstra. Mrs. Curran.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Here.
Mr. Bellnap.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mrs. Medema.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to just be excused. I have a funeral to attend, so I will be leaving a little early. Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, we're going to move through correspondence and go to public comment. If anybody would like to... Oh, do we have a list today for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
First public comment is Michael Karas, Spring Lake Township.
Hi, I'm Michael Karas. I reside in Spring Lake Township. I have already provided this information on a sign-up sheet, which you have mandated for those who, like me, would like to address this board at this meeting today. I want to address a topic which I have raised at prior board meetings, both this year and in previous years. That topic is capturing, in the minutes of these board meetings, the topic each speaker wants to bring to your attention. I want to thank the board again for all that it has done to raise awareness of county government and what it does and doesn't do for this county and its residents. Providing ample opportunity for residents and non-residents to personally bring topics to this board's attention is to your credit. It is a small step to ask each of us who wants to address you to include on the already mandated sign-up sheet not just a name and place of residence, but also a topic. And then to have that information transcribed into the minutes. Name and residence are already being transcribed. Other units of government in their public meetings already do this. I have spoken to the county administrator. I've spoken to the county clerk. They see no legal, procedural, or practical reason for not doing likewise. Such a change does not entail any significant added burden to the board's workload, nor to the workload of the county clerk or the county administrator, or to their staffs. But it does entail a small added burden to those like myself who wish to address you. I would have to write down a topic on the mandated sign-up sheet. It is a straightforward matter to include this added information with what is already being transcribed for the drafts of meeting minutes. Again, thank you for all that you are doing for our county, a place where freedom rings for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public comment is Marla Walters, Holland Township.
Good morning, Marla Walters, Holland Township. We should all be very concerned about the influence of Christian nationalism in our community. This ideology allows one small group to decide which people are valued and accepted and which aren't. It creates an us-versus-them mentality, which then foments fear and hatred towards anyone who thinks differently. When I study Jesus' teachings, I see a very different approach. Jesus constantly rebuked the Pharisees. They followed all the religious laws and by all accounts appeared to be good and righteous people. But they deemed themselves more worthy than others, and they looked down on those they saw as less than. They had forgotten those powerful words in Micah 6:8. "What does the Lord require of you but to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God?" Again and again, Jesus instructs us to love others and treat them more highly than ourselves. You don't have to agree with or even understand how everyone lives their life, but they should be allowed to live that life without fear of being mocked, ostracized, or worse. Recently, an Alendel alumnus was banned from an art symposium because of who they love. And two weeks ago, a man stood right here and cruelly mocked trans people and their struggles, while many in the crowd laughed and nudged each other. These are human beings dearly loved by their Creator, who deserve to be treated with the same dignity and respect that the rest of us enjoy. Loving your neighbor doesn't only apply to those who look, act, or think like us, and it isn't a suggestion, it's a command. Ironically, the OI slogan is freedom and family, but based on many of the actions I've seen from members and others, it begs the question, freedom for whom and what kind of families? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, number three is Stephen Rockman, Grand Haven Township.
Morning Commissioners. My comment is about the motion on the agenda to rescind the board resolutions policy. The last board passed a policy for the high-minded intent of limited government. In truth, it became an excuse for board COVID inaction. In response to the May 2021 resolution to restore freedom from COVID mandates, the board chair wrote the governor for affirmation it was powerless to do anything about COVID. Like a self-fulfilling prophecy, the board passed the resolutions policy to take away its voice. Not surprisingly, the health officer boldly told the board it had no authority to rescind the mask mandate. Notably, the judge in the COVID mask mandate case recognized that the board could fire the health officer for an abuse of authority. But by that time, the board had gone into hibernation. Maybe that was the point. There was a lot of money to be made from the state and federal emergency funding and ARPA funding, but dough out like candy. Silence was golden. No, really, the board had no problem passing the unpopular Refugee Settlement Resolution or the one to extend their terms to four years. There was one lone dissenter to the resolutions policy. In a July 26, 2021 tweet, he said, "I will be voting no, because I believe it not only impinges our right to speak, but more importantly, takes away our ability to lead on issues of importance to the Ottawa community." Likewise, there was only one commissioner who signed a resolution to restore freedom that 2,700 citizens had signed. Since they both supported unlimited commissioner comment, they should both support the rescinding the resolutions policy. The county voted for this board to be representatives of the people, not to be ignored, unlike the last board that refused to address the 1,000 citizens who filled the Fillmore complex in August 2021 to protest the mask mandate. As important as this issue was, the resolution policy conveniently gagged them, it looks like by design, to create plausible deniability. To us, our hands are tied. The COVID hysteria has passed, the money was grabbed and spent. It is time to end this policy. One of the first resolutions I would like the board to take up is the Second Amendment resolution. Unlike COVID masks, the Second Amendment is a constitutional right contained in the pillar rights. Ottawa County is a conservative community that supports the constitutional right to bear arms. Of course, there will be the usual wailing and gnashing of the teeth from the left. But responsible gun ownership has been proven to save lives, maybe one day, even their own, from the mentally ill who claim oppression by their victims.
Thank you.
Next comment is Jenna Vipon. Apologize, Vipon, okay.
Good morning, my name is Jenna Vipon, and I live in Spring Lake Township. I work at the Momentum Center, and I'm here to share some information about the center because we do receive millage money from the mental health millage that passed. The Momentum Center is a nonprofit organization that creates community for people with mental illness, addictions, and disabilities. The Momentum Center offers social and recreational programs in Grand Haven and Holland. It costs $1 to be a member, and you don't need a formal diagnosis or referral. I am a member, and I have anxiety, very badly sometimes. In Grand Haven, we have the Momentum Cafe, and in Holland, we have the Momentum Ice Cream Parlor. These two places are open to the public and welcomes people from all backgrounds and all abilities in order to come together to overcome stereotypes and to find a place of belonging. I have worked at the Momentum Center since it opened in 2017. I have witnessed firsthand the difference that we are making in people's lives. Here's a quote from one of our members. "I called and spoke to staff at the center. The staff listened as I shared what was going on in my life, and because of their kind words, I knew someone cared whether my choice was death or life. You are a part of the reason I am alive today." Not only do we have the stories of the ways that we are impacting people, but we have the data as well. Our data shows that members have had a statistically significant decrease in anxiety, depression, and loneliness after six months to one year of being a member. We offer community and are here for people when they need us, whether it's by becoming a member and participating in activities, becoming a volunteer, or just stopping in to get help with applying for food stamps. I invite you to come in for a tour and see for yourself how we are creating a safe and welcoming community for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five is Vanessa Worley, Holland Township.
Good morning, my name is Vanessa Worley, and I live in the city of Holland. I'm a part-time adjunct professor at Grand Valley, and I have a master's degree in social work. I review the social work code of ethics with my students. Social work is rooted in a set of core values and is our foundation in working with people. The code covers cultural competency, conflicts of interest, respect, discrimination, and social and political action. I realized I was a hypocrite hiding behind the many emails I have written since the first week of January. I decided to come forward to speak to all of you despite my fear, as I am also an Ottawa County employee for almost 15 years. I have worked in the public mental health system for 31 years. My job is not political. My personal political views do not matter when I am working with our clients or other community members. As a county employee, we follow the Ottawa Way, which is providing excellent customer service as a core value. We have been taught through a variety of trainings. This also means administration to the employees and good customer service to us. Yet I have heard very little about concerns for the employees or the people we serve in the community. Instead, during my one and only interaction with Administrator Gibbs, he said he could tell what side of the aisle I am on after I asked questions. I was truly taken aback. My questions were not political in nature, but rather from an employee perspective who is also a social worker. I responded, "My job was not political, nor does he know how I am voted, and quite frankly, it's none of his business." It took a few hours to realize I felt he was discriminating me. I have a voice, and I will use it. I will use it to advocate for the clients our team serves. I will use it to advocate for the 11 dedicated staff I supervise. I will use it to advocate for myself, as since I was young, all I wanted to do was something as simple as to help others. I cannot adequately express the palpable sense of fear and low morale that many of us have felt since January. We are just doing our jobs, providing mandated services to vulnerable members of our community. My emails to the county administrator have gone unanswered. Our brown bag lunch was canceled with no explanation, as was the health department's. I'm wondering if this was a coincidence. The lack of transparency and divisiveness is tearing us apart. I feel it would cause long-term damage to our services. Positions have been held up, and mandated implicit bias training is not allowed at work. I've had an open position for 25 days with zero applications, and I hired several people during a pandemic. This is very concerning to me. Thank you to Commissioner Zialstra via Chairperson Moss for always thoughtfully and kindly answering my many emails and his concern for employees. I ask that you, as a board, slow down and think through your changes and how it's affecting our community. Please don't let your personal agendas cloud serve people in this county. Please remember the many dedicated public service workers who are just trying to do their jobs despite their own political views.
Thank you.
Number six is Robert Collins, Spring Lake Village.
Good morning, thanks. I'm Bob Collins, and I am from the village of Spring Lake. My topic is understanding science and history. I've been very annoyed by anti-vaxxer speakers and promoters of Nathaniel Kelly to be appointed chief health officer for the county here. They have presented arguments and cited alleged scientific reports favoring their views. I am sure that this confuses many citizens who respect the scientific enterprise. Recall that tobacco interests had successfully held off regulations against smoking in many public spaces for over 50 years. Similar opposition to restraints on the petroleum industry to save our entire planet from global warming and wiping out civilization and life is still going on after 50 years. Why and how do we see this happening here in Ottawa County? Well, for one thing, the opposition is sponsored by very wealthy corporate and religious interests who have a lot at stake. Here in Ottawa County, it is more aligned with highly motivated and sincere Christian nationalists associated with the extreme-right MAGA Republicans. How do these ideologues operate? Well, there are Bible pickers. They come up and pick out passages from the Bible and cite them as an ultimate authority. Presumably, that ends all argumentation that is so tiresome. And in like fashion, there are science pickers who cherry pick statements from the voluminous scientific and pseudo-scientific literature for support. Many citizens do not know about the cynical pay journals out there that you can pay to publish schlock research and build up a false resume. Creationists and the oil interests have a whole parallel universe of conferences and publications of schlock literature to give a false run to impress the public. In this day of search engines and social media platforms, this has become quite easy. There are many more ways to mislead our citizens. Think history pickers or our Supreme Court. And until I will explain more as a well-published PhD and former distinguished visiting professor overseas in future sessions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven is David Branowski, Porchillon Township.
Since he said my name, I'll skip at this time. To the Commissioners from Ottawa Impact, one week ago, I told most of you that David Coleman has made false accusations in court against Matt Fenske and Justin Roebuck, and that he did so when speaking for you. I told you that there are fact witnesses that, sitting on this commission, who could confirm for you the truth of what I told you. Have you made any effort to confirm what I said? Have you made any effort to correct the false accusations made by your attorney? If not, this smear still hangs over the head of those innocent men. Are you okay with that? Did I miss your attempts to correct the record? Because I'll apologize if I did. But I went looking for it, and I didn't find it. I think that if I or any person of integrity, I think I or any person of integrity would want to correct the record if falsehood was attributed to them. I think they would want to shout from the rooftops, "That's not right, I made a mistake." What does it say about you that it seems you've said nothing of the kind? A lie of omission is an intentional failure to tell the truth in a situation requiring disclosure. I can't speak to legal standards, but on moral and political standards, a week of silence sounds intentional. I cannot say I'm surprised. At the very least, it seems you want to benefit from the accusations regardless of the truth. At the very worst, I have to wonder that if you knew in advance that your lawyer was going to speak and make false accusations in court. If there's an appropriate authority to investigate such things, I'll sign the complaint. How far down this rabbit hole do you intend to go, Mr. Moss? No reason-based government will allow you to remove the ability for mandates from a public health authority. You have been wrong from day one. You have been wrong every time the court told you you were wrong, and you will be wrong until the day you die.
Thank you.
Number eight is Jim Dana, Grand Haven City.
Morning, my name is Jim Dana, I live in Grand Haven City. My topic today is spending. I'm one of those folks that Mr. Gibbs referred to as quite fascinating in his report at the March 28 Commission Meeting, although I gladly admit to being one of those who think the elevation of his assistant's position is wasteful spending. I bristle at his caricaturing someone like me as a person who's never been concerned about government spending. I've voted in practically every election since I turned 21, longer than Mr. Gibbs has been alive. Bond issues, school board, state, national, all of them. Caricaturing one's critics is just a cynical way of dismissing the criticism as not worthy of your attention. Perhaps Mr. Gibbs' cavalier attitude towards spending stems from having never run a business, where fiscal discipline throughout the operation is essential because just the difference of a few percentage points can mean the difference between making money or losing money. Or perhaps it's because of who he's been hanging out with. I don't know his family connections, but he went to pricey schools, Stanford, Harvard, and he spent a few years in DC where cash and perks flow like the ocean or the tides. Maybe he has been, he was there so long that he thought that was normal or that it was his due. We know that he wanted to go back there. Unfortunately, he lost the election that would have taken him there. Unfortunately for us, he's landed here, and now he wants to bring Washington Ways to Ottawa County. God help us if he succeeds. We might as well just turn our pockets inside out. But I didn't come today just to talk about Mr. Gibbs' sense of entitlement. I came to talk about another expenditure that has come to my attention. More than one Coleman lawyer has been attending these meetings, but they don't sit at the table with Mr. Jordan. Why are they here? Let's do some rough math. These meetings last about four hours. With two hours drive time from Lansing and two hours back, that's a minimum of eight hours per meeting. At Coleman's rate of $2.25 per hour, that's a minimum of $1,000 per meeting. If they continue to be regulars, that's a minimum of $26,000 a year in extra billing. Wow. I better check my pockets right now. Please, someone look into that. Justification is in order, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Number nine is Cindy Cornolia, Tommich Township.
Yeah, I can get this to sit here. This is just the code. And this goes along with the presentation I'm giving. I'm Cindy from Cornolia from Tommich Township. And I'd like to speak in regards to the tabulators in our voting system. And for many years in the United States and many other countries, they've been using these different tabulators. Common names are Dominion, ESNS, and Heart Inner Civic. Apparently, there's multiple ones that are used throughout the United States and other countries. Surrounding the 2016 election, Democrats had noted that there were some ability to be hacked and manipulated, these machines. Well, guess what? In 2020, the Republicans said the same thing. And it turns out, they're all right. That machine does have the ability to make adjustments to it to affect the counts for people's votes. And in the softwares that tallies our votes, there is a setting. It's called a decimal fractions, and it can weight votes. I've actually dealt with it in the banking system, not with your money, okay? Anyway, let's say that you have 10,000 voters. You have two candidates, okay? For ease of, for me, let's say it's by each candidate can be expected to get 5,000 votes. If one candidate has got a setting of a decimal of .65 or 65%, they're going to get 3,250 of those votes. If the other candidate is set at 145% or 145, they are going to get 7,250. It was proven. Four counties were looked at by a group of engineers. And the reason that they know that this was true is that there was hand counting done afterwards and proved that the numbers were incorrect in the tabulator. What they found in Kent County, Oakland County, Macon County, and they looked at Wayne County, three of those counties had the percentages applied, meaning the votes were not directed correctly. This is a situation that affects all of us. This isn't just Democrat, Republican, Independent. It's all of us. We should want to take care of this. I propose that we get rid of that software and go back to hand counts. I'm also asking that we do image our ballots and that we do automatic audits. That's beyond canvassing. This code goes to the presentation, one of the presentations I watched, and I suggest that people do watch it and see this for themselves. Thank you for all that you do. Bye.
Thank you.
Number 10 is Ken Schwalier, Wright Township.
Good morning. My name is Ken Schwalier. I'm from Wright Township. And I concur with the previous speaker. Thank you very much. I was unhappy with the COVID shutdown, especially after plenty of time had passed and and we became aware of the science and as it relates to young children in our school, you know, regarding, you know, the mask mandate. So when I, when our local government was in a position to protect us from the overreach of federal government and the state government levels, our past commissioners sat on their hands and they just went along. That's when we, we knew as citizens we needed a change. We got that change. I'm happy with the change we have. I support all of the actions that you've taken up to this point. And I encourage you to stand firm going forward to protect the interest and freedoms of the citizens of this county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Number 11 is Cindy Spielmaker, Grand Haven City.
Good morning. Cindy Spielmaker, Grand Haven. I'm here today to express my concern, actually my anger over the Ottawa Impacts desire to turn Ottawa County into a Second Amendment sanctuary county. According to the 2018 Small Arms Survey, the United States is the only country in the world with more civilian-owned guns than people. How many more guns do we need? If having more guns would make us safer, as you seem to believe, then why does the United States have so many gun deaths? I spoke to you all in February after the mass shooting that hit so close to home at MSU. Now today, I stand before you again after more and more horrific mass shootings. I'm angry that you want to disregard common sense gun laws in favor of what? What are you hoping to accomplish? Mr. Moss, you continue to govern by fear, following your own agenda. By rescinding the previous board's resolution, you clearly are paving the way for continued division. My hope at this point is that we have a sheriff and a prosecutor who will do the right thing. I hope they will support the law by not agreeing to become a sanctuary county. One last question. Have any of you been through an active shooter drill? Not tabletop, but an actual act, active shooter drill, that like the ones we put our kids through? I have, and I can tell you that even though I knew it was real, it was terrifying. Maybe you need to experience that before you attempt to diminish enforcement of common sense gun laws by making Ottawa County a sanctuary county.
Thank you.
Number 12 is Rich Dossman, Wright Township.
Good morning, Rich Dossman, Wright Township. I'm one of those who wouldn't have been able to put down anything on the topic that I wanted to speak about because I basically wanted to come here to indicate that I've been supporting you. I was one of those who was glad that there was a change at the county level of our Board of Commissioners, and I've been supportive of you. I understand how hard it is to continue to do what you believe is right in the face of a lot of resistance all the time. So I want to thank you, congratulate you, ask you to stand strong. There's many things that have been said here that I probably could spend three hours commenting on. You know, everybody wants to cite all sorts of scientific data and claim that theirs is right, others is wrong. The idea that that we have a problem with guns, it's interesting that the places that the shootings happen are where guns are not allowed. Many of the, many of the mass shootings could have been stopped a lot sooner if people didn't have to wait for the police to show up. I could speak about Christian nationalism. You know, I am a Christian and I am proud to be a Christian, and I love this country. I think we have a fantastic nation. I would like it to be even more fantastic. I think it was much greater at the beginning. I guess that makes me a nationalist, so I guess I am a Christian nationalist. And I am proud to be one. I don't understand why people have a problem with caring about this country, loving this country, and associating it with Christianity somehow makes it bad. Christianity is the only faith in the world that truly protects the rights of everyone, whether they are Christian or not. So anyway, thank you for all you've done. I appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Number 13 is Kristi Mepelink, Zeeland Township.
Good morning. Again, Kristi Mepelink, Zeeland Township. I'm addressing the board today in regards to human trafficking concerns within Ottawa County. As Sheriff Kemker recently told the board, trafficking occurs locally, and it has been on the rise here. There's much work to be done to combat the human trafficking issue in both prevention and crisis management. I know the board is voting today to provide space within this facility to Crisis Aid International, which is an organization that responds to crimes and offers follow-up care and resources. I'm also aware that Crisis Aid International will partner with Children's Advocacy Center, which offers prevention through training, but it's geared to adults over 18, and it's for young children through fourth grade. And they also have a heavy focus on intervention after a situation occurs. But there's still a gap. My question for the board is, how do we move forward to direct county funds to help prevent residents, primarily our youth, who are highly targeted and their corresponding families from becoming victims? I again advocate for the county to find ways to partner with Warning Lights, which is local and has 10 years of experience reaching tweens and teens, which is our most vulnerable group for trafficking crimes. Warning Lights will help provide youth and young adults with a stronger sense of how to protect themselves as well as others. Warning Lights is prepared to provide age-appropriate programs for audiences of all ages in all types of settings, including schools, camps, social clubs, businesses, and conferences. They have been integrated into the Genuson Public School curriculum for 10 years, and Jen Amo, the founder, recently presented to West Ottawa High School, to a West Ottawa High School group at the request of students. The awareness gained through the Warning Lights program can help protect our kids from being a crime victim and also safeguard them from the need for crisis services. We do not want to be primarily focused on ways to respond to human trafficking. We need to take action to prevent the crisis from happening. I would ask that you meet with Warning Lights to learn more about their prevention programs to complement Crisis Aid International and Children's Advocacy Center. We need a way to, we need to find a way for Ottawa County and the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department to partner with Warning Lights so we can reduce the statistics in our county and not just provide Band-Aids for kids after it's too late. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Number 14 is Sherry Greenberger, Holland Township.
Hello, Sherry Greenberger. I live in Holland, Holland City. Ottawa County, where you belong, isn't that a nice motto? Yeah. Change. Sometimes you can change and you can move forward and you can improve, and that's good, and it takes a while and you stumble a lot. Sometimes you can have change and we can move backwards and we can devolve, and that's not so good, and that happens a lot too. Unfortunately, I think this commission is doing the backwards devolving, and I think Ottawa County is also doing that backwards devolve thing. I learn a lot at these meetings. I haven't ever really done stuff like this before. Always voted, but I've never participated, and there's a lot of passion here. The gentleman that spoke and left, I don't even really know what happened, but obviously it was very important to him. Going on to some things I thought about, I had an opportunity many years ago to meet Temple Grandin. She had a movie made about her, and she always likes to tell people when she was born in 1947 that people like her were put into institutions because she was autistic. I don't know if vaccines caused it, but she was autistic. And back then, they put people in institutions, but her mother said no. And she's had an amazing life, and she has just, it's fantastic to listen to her. All right, so people are now included in life. They're not put away in mental institutions. And this includes schooling now too. A lot of kids are now involved in, in public education. They can go to schools now. They didn't used to be able to do that. We put them away. I brought some show and tell. I like when people bring show and tell. My sister worked at the YMCA in the early 90s, and she gave me this shirt. She was in charge of activities. And I only wear it in the yard. It is clean. It looks filthy, but it's, it's yard shirt. And because I, I can't wear it anywhere else because it says, Greater Wall Fam Association for Retarded Citizens, Waltham Family YMCA. That's what we used to do. But we've changed. We've gotten better, I hope. We don't use retarded anymore. Learn more, understand more, be better to able to help people that are outside of the norm. And that's a question. Anyway, what is normal? Tolerance, diversity, open mind, willing to learn? And I just learned another thing from that one lady. You want to make this a, I don't even know what the wording is. You want guns to be allowed everywhere? Oh my God. Sorry. Don't say God in front of Ottawa County people. Remember, not all of us believe in your God or a God. It doesn't make us bad. Tolerance, diversity, willing to learn.
Thank you.
Number 15 is Joe Spalding, Holland Township.
How are you, Joe Spalding, Holland Township? Joe, you should get out there and take a ride in that little baby bike you've got. I've seen a picture of it. It's cute. I want to talk about the consent resolution to comment on issues that you guys don't have purview over. You know, personally, like as a resident of Ottawa County, it's a bad idea. It's bad policy. Personally, it's great politics for the folks that want to get you guys unseated. One of the cool things about Joe Moss is that he directly tied this commission to Christina Caramo, and that works in both directions by nominating her and seeking higher whatever glamour inside the party for whatever's left in it. And, you know, y'all are gonna do some really, really silly things. You're going to take this board, which is a pass-through for funding, and try to say that you can nullify state law. And you're going to do it by leading on like things like the racist doctrine of interposition, which Martin Luther King Jr. criticized in his "I Have a Dream" speech. You guys should definitely read the whole thing. Sometimes, sometime it's great. And it's all gonna be on video, and it's gonna be available for the whole state. As the guy who ran strategy on the petition that ended gerrymandering in Michigan, I was pretty sure that the legislature was going to flip, right? That was going to happen inevitably because you can't, as a Republican in this state, hold majority anymore without cheating, so. You know, so we knew the legislator was gonna flip, and we knew that the Republican hate machine was gonna go at the state legislature, no matter what they did. You know, they're trying to pass red flag laws that stop, you know, boyfriends when they get broken up with from going psycho and shooting their girlfriend because they think the world's going over, going to end, stuff like that. Because a lot of guys will literally do anything instead of seeking therapy. It's pretty ridiculous. And there's gonna be more mass shootings. And when those things happen, they're gonna look at politicians that either did nothing or actively push back against legislation. And y'all are gonna try to nullify state law in a way that's gonna make Ottawa County more dangerous. So, you know, as someone who definitely wants to see you guys get unseated, like let her rip, throw us in that briar patch.
Mr. Chair, those are all the registered public comments we have for this one.
All right. Does anybody else want to address the board? Please come forward. Welcome.
My name's Dave Moore, Allendale Township. I spoke before to you about how words matter, the different things about how a ship, when it's turned, causes waves. I want to leave you with one more vision that God gave me when I was a trustee in Allendale Township shortly after I found out the things that were going on. And I cried out to him and said, "So what do you want me to do to fix it?" Because I'm just an old-time farmer who believes in treating others as you want to be treated. And he showed me a vision of a mountain system, and there was a stream coming out of that mountain. And he says, "Watch, Dave," and he dropped a rock in the middle of that stream. He said, "No, just watch." And over time, eventually, the direction of that stream changed. Not because the rock talked to it or the rock was able to change anything other than to stand. And I chose then to be the best rock I could be. We all answer for the things we do, the words we use, the spears we throw, and the knives we jab. Make no mistake, you have a responsibility to the people of this county to stand, to protect us. You're our last line of defense. You can't control my gun. Second Amendment of the Constitution says you can't. But if you really care about kids and school shootings, there are things you can do. You have the right to do them. What do you do for your judges? That's your court systems. See, everybody wants to take away guns because they're scared of guns. Okay? You don't need to go there because you can't. You're not taking my gun. If you really want to take care of kids, you can do it. You take care of judges every day, don't you? It's really easy. You add another door. You put in a metal detector and you can't get through the second door unless you pass through the metal detector without any metal being shown. Not complicated. Have fast effect. Look for the easy solutions. Don't try to change the law, especially the Constitution. And please, please, please stand for the people of Ottawa County against some of these injustices that are trying to come down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Good morning. Karenova's Spring Lake Village. Love that village. So I didn't come prepared today because I decided I have already spoken, at least to most of you here on the commission, about the various issues that have arisen during previous board meetings and at the standing committee meetings which I've attended. Then again, I remember that, of course, when we speak, we also are speaking to those gathered, whether they're watching right here in this space online or will watch the recording later. That's important because, as I've said many times, I've come here not just to learn more about our county, but also to learn more about the people that are with me, a resident of this county, because we all do live together. Which means, as one other speaker said, as change happens, whether that's an elected leadership, whether ideologies change, whether each of us as individuals change, because as we have experiences, we grow, we learn. Change is hard, but when we embrace it in a positive way, we can move forward together. And instead, what I continue to hear here is a lot of divisive spirit. And I have tried really hard not to embody that myself because I do respect all opinions. But when I hear the kind of comments that speak to past grievances, we are beyond the worst of the COVID pandemic. I still wear my mask in a public setting. That's my choice. I'm allowed to do that. I have that freedom. And when there is no mandate, then you don't have to wear one. But when there is one because of the health officials who were charged with the responsibility of protecting all of our community's health, I just found it really difficult to understand why that was such an infringement on people's sense of their individual rights when it was for the sake of the whole community. That's me. That was my attitude. That is the way I responded. So I want to hear the grievance, but I also would love to see this board embody servant leadership that helps us move forward together because, as the Bible says in Isaiah, I looked it up. I couldn't come up with this citation myself. Let us reason together. That means here together, we as individuals here can't speak to each other, but we can listen to another. You as commissioners can reason together. I would love to see that take place in an open comments period again on the agenda of standing on board meetings. But again, this is how we move forward together, listening, reasoning together, as long as it's for the sake of moving forward through change, through division, together. Please embody that kind of leadership for us in this county. We're depending on you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If anyone else would like to address the board, please come forward. And you have three minutes.
Dennis Dykhouse, Georgetown, number seven. Okay, commissioners, officials, beautiful day. God bless. So there's a lot of you here that want to be politicians. Well, I don't know if it's your first time, what your expectations are, but welcome to politics. There's a lot of questions I have. Robert's Rules of Order, is it number twelve that we're using? And does everybody have a copy? Is there a parliamentarian in the House? No? Okay, quorums. Eleven, what, and then what's the number? Ten, what's the number? Nine, eight, seven, six, is there a quorum? If nine people are here and a certain two are gone, does a vote still happen? If, say, two of the six are gone, where now the six are a minority of four, does the vote happen or does somebody table it? Okay? Are there any reasons a chair can be interrupted without recognition? Anybody know? There are a number of reasons where I can interrupt. You can interrupt him at any time. If you're acting as a commissioner and you go to these meetings, you should keep track of records, receipts, any contributions, gifts and rewards received, contacts made to share with other commissioners and non-monetary transactions. Three books define politics. Great Expectations, The Jungle, Animal Farm. You want to get into politics, you got to be polite, smile and listen. You listen to me and learn from me. Me, I learn from you and maybe listen to you. To play the game, you got to master the rules and the laws. You got to be soft-spoken, truthful, use names, not groups. Use rules to benefit you and use the system to benefit you. Always respect. Politicians cannot be thin-skinned. You can't say old disparaging remarks. Doesn't matter. We have all the freedoms. You have the regulations. Okay, if, if I want to interact with an official, better hurry. I can have public comments, submit written questions, submit FOIA, submit a court order, which I must win, commence a lawsuit or audit, or contact the audit section of the Community Engagement Finance Division of the Michigan Department of Treasury for expenditures of initial funds, or the Michigan Election Code, MCL one-six-eight-nine-five-one, that seek well for recall of elected officials. Residency. I live in Savin. If I get an apartment in yours and yours is, I determine which residency is primary? And how often can I change that? I have a lot more questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good morning, commissioners. I have to confess that I didn't prepare a statement. But my name is Alpha Mansory. I am from the Holland Township. Okay? Fantastic. One of the things that I just, from talking to you, you're making comments, one of the things I have been speaking about leadership, first principle of leadership, built-in trust, a contract built-in trust, connection before correction. And we are in this together. Leadership. If you're looking to serve or if you're not looking to serve, leadership is not a place for you. If you're not looking to serve, marriage, as I spoke last week, is not a place for you. So just a couple of stories. I hear people come in here last week, the last meeting, it was just, I remember, recall the story of a somebody was suffering from mental health crisis and they spoke from Momentum Center and I was moved by their speech, asking you to release the funding that they can continue to services that they need. I just want to put that in context that sometimes we don't come all from the same places. It's like we are at Central Station. We're all traveling all over the country and find ourselves in this place together. And then how do we move forward? So years ago, I was at the Holland Post Office buying stamps. And two young men came up to the, where I was standing, just looking to mail a postage. And then one of them said, hey, do you know black people smell? And the other one said, yeah. And another incident, and there were twelve people online. No one, not a dozen people, no one spoke for me. No one said anything. Again, my story is, I told it, if you haven't seen it, I was asked to speak this past August. And one of the things that I remember was, as a student, I remember at Hope College, people coming for Thanksgiving. And one of the students from Zealand actually invited me to her parents' house in Zealand, prominent family. And she came back later and said, Grandma would not want me to come because you're one of the darkies. Again. There's a lot of pain. I think one of the things, the lesson that I want you to understand is there is a lot of pain in the room. Never underestimate the power of the pain in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item six, approval. We have one more public comment. If please, address the board, introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sorry that I'm late. My name is Donna Mooney, taxpaying resident of Georgetown, and I'd like to express my continued support for the new BOC, except Jacob Bonama, my continued support for John Gibbs, Jack Jordan, and the Common Legal Group, and my support for the appointment of Nate Kelly. I also support the dissolution of the resolution put into place by the previous BOC designed to not allow the previous board to take up resolutions for things like parental rights and health freedom. I'm disgusted with the hate being directed at Christians by those pointing fingers in themselves engaging in hateful speeches and acts. I chose Ottawa County nearly eight years ago for its conservative family values. Other than feeling a lack of representation by the former BOC and some of my elected officials in recent years, I've enjoyed Ottawa County and don't wish to see it changed into something else. I relocated from a big city with a lot of people, a lot of traffic and a lot of concrete to a place with less people and more trees and water. If I wanted to live in a progressive city, I would have chosen that. People watching this meeting are free to move where you feel you belong. This is the freedom of choice we all enjoy in this country and conservative Christians who make up a very diverse population are just as entitled to live comfortably in their majority communities as any other group without having the values of others forced upon them. Some Native Americans live on reservations with other Native Americans. Some who are Muslim live in Muslim-majority communities and the Amish live in communities with other Amish. It's human nature for people to want to live with others who share their values. I'd like to know if the self-righteous who condemn and disparage conservative Christians by branding them as racist for rejecting the teachings and institutions of Marxism and DEI are moving into Native American and Muslim communities and demanding they diversify with a progressive agenda. We all have a constitutional right to the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness and nobody has to accept anything they don't agree with. I would rather see the money that was spent on the DEI department spent on constitutional programs instead. The number one definition of nationalism from Merriam-Webster is the loyalty and devotion to a nation. Some people twist the terms Christian and nationalism against the sport and their supporters in derogatory and demeaning ways meant to demoralize and delegitimize those who have stood up for their representation in this country and county. I will never apologize for my faith in Jesus Christ and my love for America and I will continue to stand for what I believe is right for all people and for those who made the ultimate sacrifice so I can be here to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. We will move to item six. I could please get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there support?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving to consent resolutions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Metzger.
I'd like to pull off item I out of consent items just so we can address the constituent email that came in a little later that can be answered.
Wonderful. We will move I to nine A. Okay. All right. Make it a motion to approve the consent agenda. Please.
So moved.
Support.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
There are financial matters on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
I apologize. Maybe that, no, there's another, is accounts payable. County newsletter mailing, a bunch of financial.
Thank you. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Belnap.
Yes.
Mrs. Curran.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Bonama.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra.
Yes.
Mrs. Metzger.
Yes.
Mrs. Ebel.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
And Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to public hearings. Seeing we have none, we'll go straight to nine, the new nine A, Ottawa Sands Treehouse bid and contract. And Commissioner Metzger, could you make that motion and handle that one, please?
Sure. I would just like to, there was a question that came from a constituent. They were excited about the experience.
Could you please make the motion?
Sure. I'll make the motion.
Support.
Thank you.
All right. That motion is to accept the bid from Apex Contractors, Inc. for construction of the Ottawa Sands Treehouses at a cost of one million, six hundred, sixty-seven thousand dollars. Commissioner Metzger, take it away.
All right.
Do we have a support for that?
Yes. Who was support on that? Thank you, Commissioners, Alistair. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. There was an email that came in just a little later that I wasn't able to address and I just wanted it to be answered here. A constituent had asked from page, just make sure I have it correct, one ninety-four in our packet. It showed a four hundred thousand dollar difference in the budget and just wanted an explanation on where those funds are coming from. So it looks like Jason's here today, so if, if you would be able to answer that question, that would be great.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you.
The, and we did work through this with our Parks Commission and had reviewed. We actually took a month after the bids came in to review the budget and we have a fairly detailed budget that splits out the various phases. So one project or one phase of the construction is already underway. And then we have this phase which will continue to work on the campground and the treehouses in particular. And then we have future phases which will be our day-use area, which will include a trail around the lake as well as a restroom building. So overall, and then we have two grants associated with those as well. Overall, although this project and contract itself is over budget, we still have four hundred and fifty-seven thousand approximately within our Ottawa Sands capital project budget. Um, we still have four hundred and fifty seven thousand approximately within our Ottawa Sands capital project budget. Um, that we already, so we had, you know, identified those funds ahead of time. Um, and they're already in the C I P.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yep, yep.
All right, any other discussion or comments on that one? We'll go to a, go to a vote. We're accepting a bid. Do we need to do roll call?
I think anything with a financial.
Financial.
Piece of it.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and go to roll.
And Miss Cosby.
Yes.
Mister Bergman.
Yes.
Mister Zylstra.
Yes.
Mister Bonama.
Yes.
Mrs. Metamont.
Yes.
Mrs. Curran.
Yes.
Mrs. Evil.
Yes.
Mister Belknap.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Yes.
And Mister Moss.
Yes.
And motion passes.
Thank you. All right, looks like we have six three-minute committee reports. Just a little joke there, uh, we'll move forward. With uh Ottawa County Prosecutor's Office presented by uh Lee Fisher, welcome. And you may take as much time as you need.
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, Lee Fisher, Ottawa County Prosecutor. Uh, do I have a PowerPoint? Which, which uh button do I? Morning, uh, I'd like to start with a uh brief PowerPoint presentation for all of you, tell you a little bit more about our office. Um, some of you I have met with personally, some I have not yet, so hopefully this will give some of you more of an insight into what our office is all about. Um, obviously, that's me, you see the two courthouses there on the, on the first page. Uh, we go next to the prosecutor's mission statement, which is the mission of the Ottawa County Prosecutor's Office. Is to preserve and improve the quality of life for Ottawa County residents by promoting lawful conduct and enhancing the safety, security. Safety and security through diligent efforts to detect, investigate and prosecute criminal offenses in Ottawa County. And what you're seeing there in that slide is the front of the Grand Haven Courthouse, and that is the victim's memory garden that was uh. That project was spearheaded by our office. It's uh, it's our victims' rights uh advocates. Thought it would be good to raise funds to put in a, a, a memory garden for the victims of crime here in Ottawa County, and that's what you're looking at there on that slide. Uh, we have two, our office is split into two offices, two locations. We have one in each of the courthouses. Uh, the first in Grand Haven, that's where my office is located. We've got about half of our staff up there. Grand Haven Courthouse is where the Circuit Court um. Circuit Courts are located, there is a district court located there as well, there's the family court that takes, takes place there as well as some uh family court matters. Um, then we've got the uh Holland Courthouse where the other half of our staff is located. We've got two district courts down there, and that's a. Little bit busier, high-volume court. We've got more of our attorney station out of there. Also, there's another courthouse out in Hudsonville. Um, that we cover, we don't have an office out there. And when the new Family Justice Center is built, we will not have any offices there, but I understand we may. Have some office space available to us in the old building, um, the old family court building, where the juvenile just, where juvenile justice is right now. So we're a little bit split up, which is a little unique to our office compared to other prosecutors' offices across the state. Most, most county governments are all contained within one building. Where the courts are located, the prosecutor's offices, everybody's in one building, so that gives us some unique challenges from time to time as far as managing the office. And managing the attorneys and scheduling and getting people to the right places at the right time. Um, this, which is too small for me to read, I hope that you can read it. This is a flow chart of our office staff. We currently have a staff of thirty-four people, and if you want to count our court comfort dog Q. Uh, that would make our staff thirty-five at the moment. We do have one open position right now for one, one of the uh assistant prosecutor positions that the county. Gave us last year, which we have not been able to fill to this point. Um, I'll get to that in a minute, but uh, so when we, when we're all complete and completely uh staff, we will have thirty-five people on staff. And then, of course, Q, the dog um that we use for, basically, that dog is used with children for the most part. That come through who are victims of crime. Generally, those are victims of criminal sexual conduct. And we use Q to um help set the children at ease. They really seem to love the dog. And, and he's used not just in the courtroom, but also when the children come in and are interviewed. Um, sometimes at the Children's Advocacy Center, sometimes in our office for pre-trial preparation, things like that, and then, of course, in the courtroom as well. He's, he's trained to go into the courtroom and, and be there to help support the children. It's, it's really, it's really a great program. And it's been very beneficial to the victims of these very serious crimes against children. Um, we've lost a few people in twenty twenty-two, um, going into twenty twenty-three, of course, we lost Paul Kraus. Um, he left us with, you know, he had sixteen years of prosecution experience, and almost all of that was in the family court area. And almost exclusively in the areas of um child abuse and neglect, so that was a big loss for our office. And we have just recently replaced him, and I'll get to that in a minute. But losing that kind of experience, you know, it takes us a while to overcome that. We also lost Joan Grillo. Who had over twenty years of victim advocacy experience in our office. Um, before that, she had been in Muskegon, and she was one of the true pioneers and leaders in the areas of crime victims' rights in the state of Michigan. She worked very closely with Bill Van Regenmorder to uh get the Crime Victims' Rights Act, which is now constitutional rights for victims. Passed in the state of Michigan. She worked very closely with, with Bill Van Regenmorder, who was, of course, one of our legislators here from Ottawa County. And he was the, he was the, you know, spearhead for crime victims' rights in the state of Michigan. Um, we do have some new assistant prosecutors. The person that we've hired to sort of take Paul Kraus's place is Elizabeth Giddings. We've hired her as an assistant prosecuting attorney too. She's got sixteen years of experience in the area of child abuse and neglect. Her, the first six or seven years of her career were spent in the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office. Where she did strictly child abuse and neglect cases, some juvenile delinquency, but it was all in the family court uh area. She then went into private practice for another six, seven, eight years where she stayed with the child abuse neglect area. But she was representing parents in these cases, and then she also was representing children as a guardian ad litem in these cases. And just to show how committed she was to this area of child abuse and neglect. She has actually adopted two of the kids that she was a guardian ad litem for that went through the child abuse neglect system over on the east side of the state when she was doing this kind of work. So we're very fortunate to have Elizabeth. She comes to us from her most recent position, where she was the uh. Executive Director of Mediation Services in Holland. And I, I don't know how many of you are familiar with mediation services, but that was, that's, that's quite an important um nonprofit that we have in Holland. But she wanted to get back in the courtroom and start representing victims again, so we're, we're very fortunate to have Elizabeth, especially in this particular job market. Um, we're having a real hard time finding people that want to get involved in public service and want to work in law enforcement, in particular prosecutor's offices. We used to get hundreds of applications every time we had an opening. Now we're lucky if we get a couple of dozen. Um, and a lot of the ones that we're getting, the people just aren't as qualified, so we're having a hard time hiring people. So what we've done recently here, and this is new for our office, we don't normally do this, but we've hired two law students. Who are going to be graduating this spring um in May. And like I said, we don't normally do this, but this is what we're forced to do with the current job market, and not that, nothing against them. They're, they're wonderful people, and I'm sure they're going to work out great, but it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a new thing for us. And we're, we're very fortunate that we're able to hire these two outstanding law students, and we've hired them as an assistant, as assistant prosecuting attorney trainees. Uh, legally, we can't call them assistant prosecutors until they've passed the bar. Um, and that won't be for both of these people until maybe next November. So we have to call them assistant prosecuting attorney trainees, and however, they are going to get paid at the same level of assistant prosecuting attorney one. They just started the bottom, very bottom of the pay scale. So we've got Becky Niebor. Uh, she has worked for years over in the juvenile court as a support staff person, a clerk over there. She's very familiar with the family court area, and she went to law school with the idea of becoming a prosecutor and working in that area. So we're very fortunate to have her. She's very familiar with Ottawa County. She's very familiar with that court, and she's. One of our assistant prosecutors, and she's going to be working in the family court area exclusively. I don't know if any of you are familiar with her father was Detective Brad Niebor. He was a long time sheriff's deputy and then detective. And has retired within the last few years, so we know a bit about her and her family and where she comes from, and we're very excited to have Becky. We've also hired Luke Stenny, assistant prosecuting attorney training. He's a, currently a student at Michigan State University. Um, his ties to the area are, he would summer here every, every year with his uh grandparents. He was a Hope College graduate. And really wanted to come back to this area and work, and he, he also went to law school with the idea of, of going into prosecution, so fortunate to have him as well. Um, got some new support staff. Uh, Lacey Shout is a new Victims' Rights Assistant. Brianna Coiman-Hurtis is a new legal assistant two. Uh, she covers district court matters down out of the uh Hudsonville District Court. That's, that's what she does. At Tracy Uman is a legal assistant three. She's helping to cover the family court matters up in the. Uh, Circuit Court, which, you know, with the new judgeship, we needed a new support staff person, so now we have two people covering that. Uh, Christina Della Cruz, uh, she's covering uh our Holland District Court matters for us out of our Holland office. And Angie Rogers, we rehired as a legal assistant three. For a time, she had been our office manager. Uh, years ago, and then she went up to work for the Circuit Court and recently decided that she wanted to come back to our office, so we've hired her back as a legal assistant three. Just some numbers to, to highlight. Um, I, I know you all have the annual report. We submitted that. This is just to highlight some of the more significant items from the annual report. Uh, the felony caseload last year decreased by uh three point two percent. Misdemeanor caseload decreased by point four percent, which is very negligible. The juvenile caseload increased by ten point three percent. That has probably got something to do with the raise the age, when we raised the age of adults from seventeen to eighteen. So now, now that we're including the eighteen-year-olds, you know, we're going to have more uh, a higher juvenile caseload, and maybe that takes a little bit away from the adult caseload. So that's probably where that uh set comes, comes in. Uh, the, the overall total crime statistics for our office, this, these are based on the charges we authorize. The charges uh that are produced out of our office decreased point one percent. So you see it decreased by, looks like a total of eleven cases. So it's pretty, pretty steady from last year with the overall total crime number, which includes felonies, misdemeanors. And juvenile petitions, juvenile delinquency petitions. Major crime categories showing increases. We had weapons offenses up six point seven percent. Uh, drug offenses up three point three percent and property offenses up point four percent. Major felony crime category showing decreases, uh drunk driving, uh this would be felony drunk driving, was down thirteen point three percent. Which is definitely a positive. Criminal sexual conduct was down thirty-four point seven percent. Which is a substantial decrease from last year, but last year we had an increase of thirty-eight percent. So we're seeing this kind of, kind of even back out again. I think we had the huge increase last year, we're going down this year. Probably back to where we would more normally be. Uh, domestic violence thankfully is down one point five percent. Arson is down thirty-seven point five percent, which is a little bit misleading because last year we only had. Or the year before, we only had eight arson cases, we went down to five. So I know the number thirty-seven five point five looks big, but it's probably not that big of a difference. Breaking and entering down twenty-two point seven percent and robbery down eighteen point two percent. Uh, we did have five homicides, five homicide cases last year, which is substantial, substantially up for us. Um, this is one of the cases that we have pending right now that occurred in twenty twenty-two, Seneca Madison, it was down in the city of Holland. Uh, Mister Madison is accused of um shooting two people. Um, one lived, the other unfortunately did not. And this was a shooting down near the Hope College area. This is currently pending trial right now and working its way through the system. Second case, so, second homicide is uh Matthew Halasy. This occurred out in the area of Crisp out in Olive Township. This is the man who's accused of stabbing his wife to death. And this happened in front of children who were present in the home. Um, that, so he's accused of uh right now open murder. We will be trying him on a, a charge of first degree murder. In that case, it's currently pending as well. Next homicide was Michael J. Brown. This case was recently tried. This is the, the uh person who was driving. Recklessly out on US thirty-one in Holland, um, actually was charged with. Um, second degree murder. Jury returned a verdict on this one of manslaughter, O W I causing death and O W I causing serious injury. This, this gentleman hit a car and, and killed a gentleman who was from out of state and seriously injured his wife. Um, next homicide we had was a mother, Elizabeth Robinson, who was charged with manslaughter. She was a woman who's accused of leaving her child in a bathtub unattended, child drowned. Um, and it's the facts and circumstances. I mean, there's always accidents, but it was the facts and circumstances surrounding her leaving the child in the tub that led us to charge the manslaughter. I won't go into all those details, but this case is currently awaiting trial as well. And then uh the last case we had was another manslaughter charge where we had a young boy that was on a farm tractor that was run over when he fell off. Uh, I think, I think the child was three or four years old. And um originally charged with manslaughter, but after consulting with the victims and law enforcement and. Others, he was allowed to plead to the lesser charge of child abuse four degree. So those were the five homicides that we had last year. Uh, domestic violence, as I said, showed a one point five percent decrease, um, went down by what, seven, twelve cases. Um, and that, that's all I have on the PowerPoint for you. I do have a couple of additional items I'd like to touch on that were not included in the PowerPoint presentation. As I said, in twenty twenty-two, there were five homicides in Ottawa County. And that was a significant increase from twenty twenty-one, when we only had one homicide. Twenty-one, twenty-one case was tried to a jury in February of this year, and the jury returned a verdict of first degree murder in that case. Uh, the domestic violence caseload fortunately decreased by one point five percent in twenty twenty-two, down to seven hundred ninety-five cases. Domestic violence levels spiked in two thousand eighteen and had continued to rise until twenty twenty-two. And I believe these numbers would be much higher if it were not for the ongoing efforts of the Lake Shore Alliance against domestic and sexual violence and other groups. Which actively promote prevention and offer improvements in serving domestic violence victims and offenders. Our court-based domestic violence offender treatment initiative also seeks to reduce recidivism and better serve victims through the court process. Um, as has been the case for approximately the last ten years, gang violence and organized gang activity. Continues to be less visible within Ottawa County and continued to be less visible in twenty twenty-two. Our four district and circuit sobriety and recovery court programs continue to accept drug and or alcohol-dependent offenders. Using a treatment court model. Holland also has a mental health court that also uses a treatment court concept to address the needs of offenders. Suffering from mental disorders. The Prosecutor's Office assigns a prosecutor to each one of these five separate courts as part of a multidisciplinary team. That helps select suitable participants for the programs and then monitors their progress by attending bi-weekly case staffing and court sessions. The Prosecutor's Office continues to partner with the Children's Advocacy Center. That has been providing age-appropriate services for sexually abused children for the last twenty-five years. The center continues to handle referrals of cases requiring additional prosecution resources beginning in twenty twenty-one. And continuing in twenty twenty-two, our office has dedicated two full-time assistant prosecutors as opposed to one prior to twenty twenty. To work as part of a multidisciplinary team at the Child Advocacy Center. The assigned assistant prosecutors will personally handle these cases from pre-charging evaluation of the cases all the way through trial. This has resulted in many successful prosecutions of child sexual abuse cases in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-two, our office tried twenty-eight felony jury trials. This is a significant increase. In the number of trials our office tried in twenty twenty-one, prior to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, our office had averaged approximately ten to twelve. Felony jury trials a year. Um, this year we tried twenty-eight, last year we tried twenty-one, so the numbers there continue to rise. And we've already tried, I think we're trying our seventh one of the year already today. Now that trial just started this morning. Um, the Prosecutor's Office is fortunate to have extremely committed team of support staff and attorneys who continue to provide excellent service to the victims of crime. Our law enforcement partners, the Child Advocacy Center, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and all the citizens of Ottawa County. As we move from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, our office will face significant new challenges. These challenges include the addition of a new circuit court judge position that will require our office to cover an additional docket. Another significant challenge will be the implementation of use of in-car and body worn cameras by the Ottawa County Sheriff and all the. and all the law enforcement agencies in Ottawa County. These cameras will create thousands of hours in in criminal cases that will need to be reviewed by both support staff and attorneys in our office. So all of this, all of this camera footage that comes through our office will need to be reviewed, not only by the attorneys making charging decisions. They'll need to be reviewed before it was sent out for discovery to defense counsel and then may more review as you're preparing for trial and getting ready to show these videos at trial or in court. So despite these challenges, we all we face in twenty twenty two and again in twenty twenty three, all of us in Ottawa County continue to benefit from a well-functioning criminal justice system. And I want to thank all of you for the support that you provide to these efforts. Thank you. You have any questions for me?
Questions? Commissioner Cosby?
So I see that the drug cases went down due to change in legislation with marijuana. You know, I was kind of curious about that since we hear so much about fentanyl and fentanyl usage in the community. Are you bumping into that at all or?
Well, actually, the drug cases went up three, three point three percent, I believe.
Yeah, but I mean, compared to like
Overall, yeah.
All, I mean, there is one third of what it once was.
A lot, especially in the felony area, you know, the delivery of marijuana cases, some of those things that are way down. Certainly in the misdemeanor area, possession of marijuana. You know, it took, took away a lot of cases as well. But fentanyl, yes, we're seeing, we're seeing quite a bit of fentanyl.
Fentanyl use. And then extraditions. It's page fifty five, but yeah, that was a big jump in eighty six point four percent increase in twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Is there a particular issue or kind of random?
Not really, other than people are traveling out of state. I mean, people are charged. And some of these are probably cases where they've been charged, but they've traveled out of state. They're not around and then they're located. You know, the, 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 the charge goes into the law enforcement information network and then they're, they're arrested somewhere else, some other state, some other part of the country. And then, of course, we're notified here and then we have to go pick them up and bring them back to face the charges. Some of them, maybe people who are out on bond, who are disappearing and are found later, you know, through the same type of same type of process where they get arrested or have law enforcement contact in some other state and then we have to go get them. And I, I really can't explain that increase. It's a pretty substantial increase. It's almost doubled, but I, I'm not quite sure why.
No trends that you're seeing.
No, no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roddy?
So with a, with a juvenile case, it, it looks like, you know, that went up and that might be explained by the eighteen year old category change. But what are the kinds of crimes that you're most seeing out of the juvenile group?
Most of those are would be misdemeanor variety, a lot of retail fraud. A lot of, well, there are quite a few domestic violence cases where it's usually a parent or a family member who's a victim in those domestic violence cases. So I'd say retail frauds, domestic violence, some drugs and some alcohol. But most is generally it's misdemeanor, more misdemeanor type stuff.
Commissioner Bonnema.
Thank you, Lee, for a great report. It sounds like you're holding the line pretty well.
Thank you.
Ticks up, ticks down, but you're prosecuting and carrying out justice. So thank you for that. Three points of interest, comment as much as you feel comfortable. But have you had to prosecute some human trafficking cases in Ottawa County? That, let me just throw out my three real quick and you can pick what you want to talk about. Human trafficking, voter fraud. Have you had to? That's a hot topic that people talk about. Have you prosecuted any of those? And then the last one would be, if you'd like to comment on the Second Amendment Sanctuary conversation that's out there, just would be interested in any thoughts or guidance that you might want to offer us?
All right. Well, as far as human trafficking, no, we have not prosecuted any human trafficking cases. Now some, maybe some of our sex abuse cases, some of our, you know, computer crime type cases, you know, with, with sexting and adults communicating with children. I mean, maybe they could be lumped into that category, but as far as actual human trafficking, no, we have not prosecuted any of that in Ottawa County. And my understanding is, is when there is a, a, a human trafficking case like that, those have been being referred out to the federal people over in Grand Rapids for prosecution. So no, we're not really doing any of that. The second item was, I'm sorry, what was the second one? Remember the third one, but I don't remember.
Voter fraud?
Voter fraud. I've had a couple of cases referred to me to be reviewed for charges for some type of voter fraud. And what was submitted to me, there was not sufficient evidence to, to bring any type of charges. I think I've had two different, two or three different cases submitted to me that were investigated by the sheriff's office or whatever the, the appropriate police agency was, and there was not enough information, not enough evidence there to charge anybody with voter fraud in Ottawa County. You know, really, after the investigations were complete, it wasn't even a close follow us whether there should be charges or not. There's, there's clearly was nothing there. And then as far as the Second Amendment, Sanctuary County, I believe I was sent a proposed resolution for my perusal and commentary, and I, I did send a email back to all of you indicating to you what my position was. And my position on that is I don't believe it's appropriate for me as the county prosecutor to publicly support or not support any type of resolution, any type of political statement, which the resolution was, in my opinion. Political statement, because if there's violations of the gun laws, whatever they may turn out to be, whatever gets passed doesn't get passed. I have to objectively and fairly review those complaints and those investigations to decide if somebody's going to be charged with violating the law or not. And I don't think it's appropriate for me to come out ahead of time and give a state my position on this, one way or the other. Given my unique position in the criminal justice system.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we are to ten B Ottawa County Fifty Eighth District Court Annual Report presented by Bradley Knoll. Welcome.
You say Knoll and Holland, though I since moved to Grand Haven, so I've had to change my name back to Knoll, but good morning. I'm Judge Brad, whatever. Chief Judge of the Fifty Eighth District Court, and it's my pleasure to present our annual statement to you today. And I was, there are so many new faces here. I was anxious to make a good impression on people who I haven't met yet. And I was trying to think how to do that. I recalled a bar association meeting a few months back where the judges were asked to sit on a panel to give, on the very same topic of making a good impression, giving advice to the lawyers about how to make a good impression on the judges for motion practice. I was thinking back to that and the panel of judges that I was on gave excellent suggestions about preparation and organization and promptness, and they covered all the stuff until it got to me and I simply said, my suggestion to you is don't embarrass me in court by asking if I've read your brief. So in that same vein, I'm not going to ask you if you've read the Fifty Eighth District Court's annual report, but I hope you will. And I wanted to give you sort of a spoiler alert today to talk to you about some of the things that we do. Now, if you don't know anything about what a district court does or what Fifty Eighth District Court does, the report looks like a lot of graphs and smiling faces. And I wanted to just give you an idea of four of the things that I think that we do and that we do well. First of all, we, we serve thousands of people annually. Court users, litigants, civil litigants, criminal defendants, law enforcement, prosecutors, lawyers, and so forth. And the important part of all of that is to treat everyone who comes through our doors with dignity and respect. It's, it's an adjunct to due process because all cases require due process, whether it's a criminal case or whether it's a civil case. Due process is defined as adequate notice and an opportunity to be heard. And we survey court users regularly to see how we're doing and we do very well. All of the three court locations do well. Interestingly, at least to me, is that the most important thing to the people, the litigants who are being surveyed is not whether they won or lost the case, but whether they felt they were fairly heard. So that's our goal is to provide fair hearing, respect to everyone who comes in. And I think we do that well. We provide twenty four seven assistance to law enforcement. All criminal cases begin in the district court with the issuance of search warrants and arrest warrants. The more serious felony matters are later bound over in most cases to the Circuit Court for further proceedings. In fact, I had a phone call at one thirty this morning asking for a search warrant and every, there are seven judges and magistrates. We each take a weekly turn being on call and then on the weekends, we go out to the jail on Saturday and Sunday to authorize any warrants for people who have been arrested without a warrant or setting bonds for them at that time. We address the special needs of persons in the community afflicted with substance abuse disorders or mental health disorders through our recovery courts. We work hard on the recovery courts because they work. And the statistics in the annual report will show the difference in recidivism recidivism rates between people who successfully complete a recovery court and people who do not. We're also having affiliation with the Veterans Treatment Court out of Allegan County, run by Judge Valargen. So participants who would qualify for the Veterans Court are frequently referred to Allegan County for their participation there. And then obviously we're required to comply with state and federal mandates in terms of disposition of cases, the prompt disposition of cases. We are required individually as judges to report quarterly on matters submitted to us for an opinion as well as the overall disposition of cases. And the annual report shows that we do very well in keeping our docket in order. Now, obviously during COVID times, there was a problem there because we weren't able to conduct any jury trials. So our jury trial box filled up and then second box filled up and we got to the third box of jury trials. And so that's, that's been a special project for us with the, with the court reopening to address all the needs of jury trials. We try to conduct to a month to get that each judge conduct to a month. There are two judges in Holland, Judge Bochneger and myself, Judge Bunson, Grand Haven and Judge Mulder in the Hudsonville Court. And actually our jurisdiction is a little bit larger than the Circuit Court's jurisdiction because the district court's jurisdiction also extends into the portion of Allegan County, that city of Holland. So geographically, our jurisdiction is a little bit bigger. In the past, prosecutor presented his information on the crime statistics and we'd look at ours and we go, well, these don't necessarily mesh, but some of that's explained by the difference in jurisdiction. If we've got a felony case in Allegan County, city of Holland, it would be bound over to the Allegan County Circuit Court. New attorney, new prosecutor, new judge. But that doesn't present a significant amount of the work that we do. As I mentioned, our recovery, our emphasis is especially on recovery courts as part of our regular docket. And starting with the COVID pandemic emergency, there was a special emphasis on landlord tenant matters. And that continues. We've gone through an eviction diversion program. We've gone through the SARA program. We're also implementing a smaller scale Ottawa County program to assist people who qualify for rental assistance. It's a special area of interest of mine. It's, I'm responsible for teaching the new judges every two years, landlord tenant law. It's not something that was a particular interest of mine as a lawyer. I just sort of as, as things happen, just sort of stumbled into that when one other judge hooked me into taking care of that. But it's something I pay close attention to. And trying to balance the interests of anybody, especially in landlord tenant matters is difficult. Because about ninety, ninety five percent of landlords are represented by an attorney and about ninety nine percent of the tenants are not. And the judge has to be impartial and I can't put my thumb on the scale, but you do have to recognize the special needs of the unrepresented, whether it's whether it's a landlord tenant matter or regular civil proceeding, the case law instructs us to be indulgent with the self-represented. So we, you know, generally speaking, like for instance, on a motion for summary disposition, an unrepresented person will never have a response, written response required by the court. Also, we always give them a little extra time. And that's, that's part of the judge's job. It's just a common sense thing. Because it's important that people feel that they were fairly heard. I don't want to, I, I don't want to throw somebody out of court because their brief was submitted three days late or they didn't submit a brief. It's a matter of getting the facts before the trial or fact and making a fair decision from there. So I don't want to, I don't know what else I can, that I want to mention. We do have eighty five employees. Lori Catalino is here today. Our administrator who keeps our ship afloat. The deal is she prepares the annual statement and I present the oral presentation and we'll, we'll probably keep it that way. We have a very low turnover rate. We're trying to figure out what it is, about one or two percent, which is usually for either for promotions or retirement. So we have a satisfied work group. And Alma Valenzuela is also here today, Director of our Probation Department and Community Corrections, which is explained more fully in the annual report. So that's it for me. Are there any questions?
Commissioners Alstra.
I just want to commend you and your staff, Brad. Everyone I've always talked to has just referred to the way you talked about a fair hearing, right? That's what everybody wants. So so I thank you for your efforts and your staff's efforts, Alma and everybody else. Especially in Holland. You and Judge Bochneger, I think. Nobody has, everybody has, you said, you know, we get a fair hearing with those two judges, so.
Yeah. It's been my special pleasure to work first with Judge Jonas for so many years and then to have her replaced by Judge Bochneger, whose story is just an amazing story of overcoming difficulties to be in the position that she's in. She's an excellent judge. She will serve Ottawa County very well. And I'm really jealous that she's been nominated as the Grand Marshal of Tool Time Parade.
Maybe before you leave the judge.
Maybe.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to mention that kind of support what Commissioners Alstra is saying, because as I read through the report last night, I was looking at just the great lengths the district court is going to to prevent recidivism by, you know, participating with advocacy programs with sobriety and substance use and mental health. So thank you very much for doing that. You're having great results too.
Yeah, we, we, we can't undo what's happened. So we, we, we have to devote our efforts, obviously, to provide closure and restitution and fairness to the victims. But over, the overarching goal here is to make sure it doesn't happen again. And we do that. The domestic violence cases, all the domestic violence, all the guys who are on probation come before me on a regular basis for a review of their progress. We have an excellent program administered by Westshore Counseling Services, Better Accountability Group. And almost to a man, the guys go through that. By the time they're done, say, this is the best thing I've ever done. It's given me tools to deal with those sort of things that would trip me up in the past. And the people who do successfully complete that, we don't see them back, very seldom.
That's remarkable.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Commissioner Roddy?
I also appreciate that compassion that you're showing and, and helping people, you know, move, move beyond those things that have caught them up in the past. And then I was just wondering if you could have your staff stand up so we know who they are?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they were standing up and going like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, the only thing the Michigan Supreme Court has ever quoted me as saying is that at a Veterans Court graduation ceremony, I said, at the end of the day, it's not a question of us and them. It's just a question of us. So the people struggling with mental health disorders, the people struggling with substance abuse, or they're us, they're part of our community. You can't separate us from them. But thank you for your comments.
That's good. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Ottawa County Twentieth Circuit and Probate Courts Annual Report by Susan Franklin. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come here and present and talk about my favorite thing, which is the wonderful work that our which is the wonderful work that our circuit and probate courts are doing here in Ottawa County. I have a PowerPoint that I'm working on. So with Judge Canall in the District Court, the circuit and the probate courts are the other two trial courts. We have three trial courts in our area that hear various cases. So the circuit court, for instance, hears the felony matters. They're first heard in district court and then they're bound over to circuit court where they go to trial. And the probate court, well, the circuit court also hears civil cases that are alleged to have been worth more than twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's our jurisdiction. District court gets the less than twenty-five thousand and we get the more than twenty-five thousand cases. We also hear the family law matters. That is our biggest part of our docket. And so we'll be talking a little bit more about that in my annual report. And we have three locations. We are currently having the Grand Haven Courthouse. We have four circuit court judges there. And we have the West Olive Courthouse where we have two courtrooms. And that's where our Fifth Circuit Court Judge currently is, as well as our probate court judge, Judge Fine. And that, of course, is right across the street. But eventually we'll be moving to the beautiful new Family Justice Center, which I hope will be featured in my next year's annual report for you. We're very excited about that prospect. Who's doing that? This is my actual document. I need my PowerPoint, please. No, that's not, that's okay. You'll just have to imagine it, I guess. Sorry about that. So in 2022, we had four circuit court judges and I have pictures of their lovely faces that I would have been showing you. But you can imagine them too. They're very stately individuals who often wear black robes. We have a fifth that was just started in 2023. That is Judge Paul Kraus, which Lee Fisher I'm sure is missing. But we're very happy to have him on board with us and he's doing a wonderful job. We have two chief judges, one for each, the circuit court and the probate court. They both would have really liked to have been here today, but unfortunately, they were both scheduled for trials that had, that were, had been delayed and were not allowed to be delayed any further. So they do apologize for not being here today. And those are Judge Van Aalsberg and Judge Fine for probate court. So we have to organize the circuit and the probate court leadership, we've got myself as the court administrator. And then under me, I have four departments and each of those departments has a leadership team member leading it. So for our family division, we have two. Our juvenile services director, Tom Lattick, and our friend of the court, Janelle Chala. And then we have our other two divisions, which are our two smaller divisions, which is the trial division for circuit court and the probate court, which is our smallest court division. There's only six employees that service over fourteen thousand cases. So they work very hard to work on all of those probate court cases for us. The trial division, just talk about them first. They handle a lot of what you typically think are the, of when you think of a court. They hear those felony criminal cases. There's the civil cases, including our business court cases. They hear appeals, personal protection orders often come to them. Our recovery court is part of our trial division. We also do other services within our trial division, including legal research and writing for the judges. And also our, excuse me, our case scheduling and felony collections. So we have two people that work just tirelessly on felony collections. So that after defendants are sentenced, we have two people that pay close attention to those cases to try to get that restitution and those fines and costs paid. And they work very well with the defendants to make sure that that happens. So the trial division caseload is primarily criminal. It's about sixty-six point six percent criminal in 2022. And we had about twenty-eight percent being our civil caseload with the rest being our appeals. And our case filings have slowly been coming up from 2020. We're not yet back to our pre-pandemic numbers, but we are on our way back up. So we imagine that we'll be there within the next few years again. So without showing you my charts, I apologize. It's a little hard to go through all of this. But we did a number of trials last year. There were twenty-eight criminal trials, as Lee mentioned earlier in his report, and five civil jury trials. So that is a high for Ottawa County. We've, at least in the recordable history that I was able to check, we've never gotten to thirty-three jury trials before in a year. So we worked hard, we got through it. And these cases, I would like to stress, are not delayed COVID cases. We finished our COVID backlog last year. This was all just, you know, trials coming up as they should. So we've moved past the COVID delay. We did have also a number of bench trials. We had two criminal bench trials as well as sixteen civil and thirteen in juvenile and child protective services. As previously discussed by Judge Canall, we also have a treatment court as part of the circuit court. That's our Ottawa County Recovery Court. This court helps with people who have drug offenses and drug issues, as well as multiple drunk driving cases. It's a hybrid court in that it covers both of those two areas. And this court has been in operation for about eighteen years. It's funded solely through state and federal grants. None, no county dollars are used to support that recovery court. And it's been recognized nationally as a national mentor court. We frequently have other recovery courts that are starting. They come out and visit with us to see how to really do it well. So we're very proud of our recovery court. So moving on to more of our family divisions, the friend of the court is the part of the family court that is statutorily required to assist with child support collection, parenting time enforcement, child custody investigations and paternity establishments. And our friend of the court has consistently been recognized throughout the state as a very high performing friend of the court. We typically get a very high reimbursement dollars because if you're doing your job well in friend of the court, you get federal reimbursement. And we try to maximize that every year and we've done a fantastic job on that. So they also have been on the leading edge of technology in that our friend of the court has developed a parenting time and child support enforcement online dispute resolution program. So this allows people to avoid having to come to court. But instead, you know, they can log on with their phone and let the friend of the court know, hey, I'm, I'm going to pay my child support. I'm going to get it to you, you know, when and where, and work with the friend of the court to make those payment arrangements so that they don't have to take out of their time of the day to come to court and explain to the judge why they haven't paid. And we found that that has really helped reduce the number of hearings we've had to do. And it's also increased the amount that we've been able to collect in child support by, you know, trying those different ideas. We also have a parenting time platform that we have more recently developed that the state has now sort of worked off of all our good work and is moving it throughout the state. But that allows for parents to talk to each other in an online forum with a friend of the court person kind of monitoring to try to work out those differences that they might have when it comes to parenting time. Because we've really found that when the parents can work together, that's really going to get the best outcomes for the children. And that's what we want to see. So we try to help them do so in a less fraught, emotionally fraught manner by doing that through our online dispute resolution platform. So our family division cases in the last few years have gone down a bit. And I would attribute some of that to the pandemic. A lot of, unfortunately, people believed that we were completely closed, I think, during the pandemic. And we tried to get out there that, you know, we were still doing hearings. Unfortunately, we were doing them via Zoom because the courthouse was closed. And that was required of us by the state Supreme Court. So we, we moved to Zoom very quickly and we were still hearing those motions, but not as many were being filed. So I think we're going to see an uptick as we get further along because I'm sure those problems, you know, did not stop happening. Unfortunately, we just didn't see them as frequently. And I think those numbers will be coming back up. So with our juvenile court division, that's our largest division. Our most employees with, are with the juvenile court. That's a division gets a lot of its funding through the childcare fund that's distributed by the state of Michigan. And we also have a juvenile detention center, which is a forty-bed, twenty-four-hour, seven facility here in Ottawa County that we run as part of our court auspices. And we are the only American, and I'm going to get the accreditation wrong, but we are the only American Correctional Institute accredited facility in the state of Michigan for juvenile detention. We are highly sought after by other counties. We have several agreements with other counties where if they need to house a juvenile and they don't, do not have a juvenile detention center, they bring them over to here and then they pay us a per diem for having to house that juvenile for that period of time. So it's not, I would not, I can't claim that it's a revenue, really bringing in a lot of revenue for the county. But it does allow our court to service our families and Ottawa County in a way that a lot of other counties can't because we have this facility. We always take Ottawa County kids first. We always make sure that we have room for Ottawa County kids. And those kids can then be, have access to the programming that our juvenile services department has worked hard to create. Detention is not always the best choice for juveniles. Unfortunately, a lot of times you're teaching them to become better criminals if you're detaining them. And we want to provide them with the services to make better choices. And our juvenile services department and our juvenile probation department works very hard on that and is doing a fantastic job. In 2022, we had about fifty-nine child protective petitions filed. Only six juvenile protection orders, which is lower than usual. And we supervised about four hundred sixteen nine, four fifty-nine, excuse me, juveniles in our juvenile probation department. And we had, one of our favorite things is adoptions. We had a hundred and two adoption petitions. A lot of our work, unfortunately, can be seeing people on their worst days. So we very much look forward to the adoptions. We love to bring families together. Also, as part of our services that we provide for the circuit court and probate court is that we have a legal self-help center. And this is currently located in our Grand Haven courthouse. We have a very tiny little room where people can come if they're self-represented to get some, they can't get legal advice from us, but they can get the forms that they need to file out. Those forms can be reviewed by our legal self-help center staff to make sure that they're complete. And the legal self-help center staff can provide them with an overview of the process and what they're going to see when they go to court. And this really helps self-represented litigants. And it helps the court too, because before the, the judges would have a hearing, they would look at the forms. They say, I'm sorry, you didn't fill this out correctly. You need to come back on a later day. Right now, we can take, the judges take a look at the forms and say, I'm sorry, you need to go talk to this legal self-help center and come right back when you're done. So that helps move us to resolution a lot faster, both for the judges and our caseload guidelines, as well as for the citizens of Ottawa County. So the legal self-help center has really been a great boon to the circuit court. We currently have one and a half employees that service our legal self, self center. Previously, prior to the pandemic, we really relied on volunteers who we'd bring in and train. But unfortunately, that, the, the volunteer pool has kind of dried up for us. We're still looking out for them whenever we can. We'd like to bring in interns to try to train them. But of course, then the interns leave us shortly thereafter. So that's not always the most longevity inducing way to handle this. So I, just a preview of my budget request, that I may be requesting an additional person for our legal self-help center, particularly as we will soon have the Family Justice Center across the street, which will also have a need for legal self-help center staff. And splitting one and a half people between two locations is a math problem that I'm not particularly well able to answer at this particular time. So moving on, I'll tell you a little about probate court. A lot of people, you know, think probate is a bad word. You know, they say, oh, no, you've got to go to probate. But our probate court does a really hard, a really difficult job to help people when their loved ones have passed or when their loved ones are experiencing mental illness. They have deceased estates, mental commitments, minor guardianships, adult guardianships, conservatorships. They really provide a service to make sure that these people are being taken care of in what can be some of their worst times. So as I said earlier, they've got about fourteen thousand open cases at any given time and that number is continually going up every year. So they work hard with those six probate court employees. And just finally, to wrap up for me, we couldn't do any of our work without Ottawa County and all of the other departments that we rely on. The Sheriff's Department is a wonderful partner to work with, as is the prosecuting attorney. We work well with the Clerk's Office very closely since they are the keeper of the circuit court records and also district court and many other departments. So a lot of that is due to the support that we've gotten from the Board of Commissioners, which we very much appreciate. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Also shout out to facilities.
Oh, yes, definitely. Yeah.
Commissioner Bottom.
Happy to not hear from me on any given day.
Right. Commissioner Abel?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank the judges, especially in probate court, because they have been very helpful for hospitals regarding getting emergency guardianship and conservatorship. And I know the one that I think of the most, that for some reason would always take the cases, was Judge Fine. So I've never met him. I know, I have never met him. So hopefully one day I'll meet him, but I thank him because he just really helped us as far as hospitals and seeing us and seeing the, the families who are at stress, you know, with their loved ones. So I want to thank you.
And I will pass that on. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Rodi?
Just want to thank you again for all of your hard work and all that you guys do for our county.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up, Ottawa County Human Resources presented by Marcy Rubik. Welcome.
Good morning. I have a PowerPoint too, so. If I be able to move this. Perfect. So first of all, again, good morning. I'm Marcy Rubik. I'm the HR director here. I know I haven't met all of you yet, but I've been with Ottawa County for fifteen years. And I'm fortunate to be able to give a snapshot of all the hard work the HR team does to provide support for the most important part of this organization. It's our employees. You've probably had a chance to review the annual report. I'm just going to highlight some things. It's kind of jumping around. Again, in HR, we have eleven employees. That's what we kind of do. We jump around based on what's going on at the time and the moment. So first thing I want to talk about is our emerging leadership program. This is a program that we launched in two thousand eight. As you've heard, different departments talk about recruitment and retention. This is one effort that we put forward to build a program that we've had ninety-two participants take take part in. And thirty-seven percent of the employees that have taken part in this have already been promoted within the organization. This program focuses on identifying strengths, areas of potential growth, public speaking, fostering teamwork, building professional networks within county departments and preparing to compete in supervisory roles. We've heard from many department heads in hiring managers that they can tell a difference in the interview itself from the employees that have gone through this program. And we believe this type of program will continue to unlock, unlock the potential of our employees in the future. This is our last group that, that graduated. And there is usually a typically a waiting list for this program. So we cannot always take all of the people that even apply. It is limited to approximately twenty people in a pretty intense course that we run. all of the people that even apply. It is limited to approximately twenty people in a pretty intense course that we run. Moving on to talent and development and hiring, again, something we're hearing about everywhere. So it's not a surprise to Ottawa County. This is not a surprise to organizations in the area. We're all facing some of the same things. One of the things that we do with training and development is we're continuing continually evaluating the training needs of our employees in our departments. As the workforce continues to evolve and change, we use several sources of information to create these training programs. We use exit interviews, we use employee engagement surveys, we use the county strategic plan and feedback, feedback from leadership and employees. In two thousand and twenty-two, the HR team provided two hundred and seventy-six training sessions with seven hundred and ninety-nine attendees. In two thousand and twenty-two alone. As we came out of COVID, we learned a lot about how we could teach employees when they were not all in the same room. So we've been able to do some types of hybrid approaches to training also. There's some things we can still do online for employees. And then there's a lot of courses that still are great to have in person to build that camaraderie in the organization. And so we have both methods being used right now. And again, just a listing of some of the courses that we offer, a wide variety of classes from Crucial Conversations, Behaviors of a Cohesive Team, The Customer Service Training, Citizen's Response to Active Shooter, and Situational Awareness Training. As we move on in into hiring, obviously, this is a main focus and this is where we've been really, really busy. There are times where over half of our HR staff is all in interviews at the same time with different departments. It's since two thousand and eighteen, it's been difficult nationwide to fill positions in the workforce. And we've taken very creative approaches. As you heard earlier from Prosecutor Fisher, we have had to be creative to attract talent. And so this graph up here gives kind of an overview of the last twenty-two years and the highs and lows, but since two thousand and eighteen, numbers have been trending downwards. We continue to try and be innovative in our recruiting methods, marketing, creating talent pipelines and building partnerships, which is very important in seeking talent for the future. Our HR team is very active in interviewing. In two thousand and twenty-two, we conducted over ten, over a thousand sixty-four interviews. Sheriff's Office alone was over two hundred. Next big group is community mental health. We do almost two hundred interviews a year for that department. And then, as you saw in probably my opening statement, the HR department had over fifty percent turnover in two thousand and twenty-two. So we did a lot of interviews for our own department too. As we move on to employee well-being, this has been a focus at Ottawa County since two thousand and twelve. We kind of look at it like a three-legged stool, looking at health management, employee assistance programs and brain health. Health management program has evolved in time since two thousand and twelve and really puts a priority not only on reducing the cost of the claims for Ottawa County, because that essentially is what hits our budget, but also on how we can encourage preventative care for both employees and the spouses. Our Employee Assistance Program, we have a very active EAP program. Most employers probably can't say that. We were very strategic about our partnership when we entered it with Pine Rest. They provide counseling services not only for the employees but family members in the household. They also provide psychological body armor for our new hires at the Sheriff's Office when they start, as well as critical incident debriefings for Sheriff's Office and any other department that may have a major incident. We're very thankful to have a service for employees and it's definitely used. Robertson Brain Health is another employee well-being portion that we focus on. This coaches employees on ways to alter their brain chemistry to re- reach optical brain health performance in relation, not only their performance at work, but relationships at home. It's a very holistic approach. Dr. Robertson started this program with law enforcement and we have moved it on to county employees also. Some of the, some of the information that we found from him is we can save over fifty-five thousand dollars over the course of a lifetime in health insurance costs for our employees. And again, it's also all the other added benefits that come to the employees from this program. Talent Pipeline, again, it's kind of back to that creativity and trying to be innovative as possible. One area that we took part in in two thousand and twenty-two was building a partnership with the Ottawa Area Intermediate School District. We worked with them on work-based learning opportunities for students, so they can come here, get real life experience and receive school credit while they're here with us. It's an opportunity for the students. And we've actually recently had an employee that came from the ISD that has already applied for a cadet position because they want to be a deputy in the future. So this is again a pipeline that's right here in our community that we can take part in. As we kind of jump backwards to help management, this is one area where we've been able to save the county quite a bit of money over the course of time. Again, it started in two thousand and twelve. We knew we had to address the rising healthcare costs. There's a small graph there that kind of shows where the market was going and where we were going. When I began my career here, we had multiple different health insurance programs for every single group of employees. Very difficult to keep track of and very, very different costs and we streamlined that over time. So we moved all those plans. We, we started out in two thousand and twelve with three plans. One of those plans, no employees ended up signing up for back in two thousand and twenty-one, I believe. So we consolidated down to two health insurance plans. And then recently, this year in two thousand and twenty-three, we added a third high deductible health plan. So what we did is we, we focused on adding high deductible health plans to introduce employee consumerism to our employees. By doing that, we did fund parts of the deductible, which we still do. And again, that was able to help us reduce those costs. One other thing that we did was the health management plan. And again, building healthy habits in preventative care. We have one of the highest amount of participations in health management plans in all of Gallagher's Book of Business, who's our third-party administrator. So we have worked with them in the past. They published a white paper in two thousand and eighteen that showed the savings, which was over three million dollars to the health insurance plans by the implementations of these pieces that Ottawa County has done. As we move on to the important stuff, all of it's important, but I think one of the biggest things that people don't think about that we do all the time is every two weeks is bi-weekly payroll. So we have a dedicated staff of employees in HR. It's approximately two point five million dollars in payroll each pay period every two weeks, twelve hundred employees. Two hundred and one employee deduction types, a hundred and nineteen pay codes. Again, this is something they like to keep me away from because there's too many things to touch and break, so. And again, we have two dedicated staff that are making sure employees are paid on time, that are paid accurately, that grant funding is is distributed correctly. And again, working with our fiscal services departments and all the departments around to make sure it's accurate. Labor relations, we do have seven collective bargaining groups and three non-union groups. Last year, we did negotiate a one-year contract with our juvenile court and all seven of our union contracts are up this year. So it'll be a very busy year for negotiations. Because they all expire at the end of this year. In two thousand and twenty-two, we also had an awards banquet and we hadn't had one in three years because of COVID. So it was a very large awards banquet. We recognized three hundred and seventy-one employees. We had fifteen customer service awards recipients and ninety retirees honored at that time. We are so grateful in HR that we're able to put on the awards banquet every year. We have such dedicated staff here at Ottawa County that we like to take that, that moment to recognize them and recognize all their hard work and dedication to Ottawa County. As we look ahead for two thousand and twenty-three, we're gonna further the work with the ISD to create programs, again, really looking at building talent pipelines. We're also building a leadership competency model in the HR department. And again, that's working with leadership throughout the organization to build that. We are looking at a new time and attendance software system that always does take extra time and care to make sure it works correctly and works for every single department that works here. We are scheduled for another bi-annual employee engagement survey. Continuing recruiting efforts and again, contract negotiations. I'd be remiss if I didn't take some time to say thanks to the HR team. They're very dedicated to the employees of Ottawa County and they take care of the most valuable asset, our employees. So thank you for this moment to go through this information. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Cosby?
So just from your opening page, I could tell turnover rate, you're identifying a high turnover rate for your department. And that aside, do we identify turnover rate by departments here at the county? Can I have more targeted individualized plan? I know we do that in healthcare.
Correct. Yes, each department would have those numbers for, and we could provide them. And again, we, HR is a good example of, we've never seen a turnover rate that high. We had retirements and people moved on to better career opportunities, so. But yes, we do track all of that information. We also track the amount of interviews. We track applicant data. Again, how many applications are we getting? For each of the positions, so we can track all of those. It's very separated by each department.
So some of the interventions that you were talking about, kind of like the mindfulness training EAP program, those interventions have been targeted based upon kind of feedback from your, your surveys post-employment? Or what, what has made you conclude?
So a couple of things. Yes, we do use the exit surveys. We are very targeted also on how we use the employee engagement surveys. We take all that data, we could provide to the board to show how we're targeting. It's, it's something sometimes as simple as pay versus benefits. How do you feel about your benefits at Ottawa County? And so we can really target those different areas. Hopefully, I'm answering the question.
No, no, you are. Actually, because I mean, we have a fantastic benefits program here at the county, I noted. So yeah, being able to advertise that more, if that would be helpful. But is there something that we can do as commissioners to make your job easier?
That's a, that's a great question. I mean, I think that's the biggest thing that we're, every employer's challenged with right now is how to recruit people and retain employees here. So it's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bellman?
Oh, just an acknowledgement, over twelve hundred employees, only thirty-seven disciplinary actions. So I think that speaks volumes for the, the workforce that we have here.
Thank you. It does. We have great employees at Ottawa County.
I'll add in, you mentioned earlier the white paper that mentioned three million in savings. And just to highlight, it says that was in two thousand and sixteen alone. So that's pretty cool.
It was, it's, it's a great white paper. I think we've got it out on our site, otherwise I could share it with you. And it would, we're hopeful that we can go back and do that again with Gallagher. I think one of it, what, you know, you hate to keep saying COVID, 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 but a lot of things changes in healthcare. And so even the health management plan during those periods of time and getting people in, we had a little bit of a slowdown, but I think that now that we're through that, I think we're gonna see great results still by that employee consumerism and the health management program. And our health management program for two thousand and twenty-three has a little bit different spin. It's much easier for employees. And it's really focused on a lot of that preventative care, which I think is important.
Very cool. Anything else? Yes, Administrator Gibbs.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Just wanted to say, Marcy, thank you. It's a pleasure to work with you and whenever I ask you for anything, you always give me very detailed answers of what I'm looking for, so. I really appreciate that and thank you for, for your leadership and nature.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have ten E Ottawa County Community Action Agency, Jennifer Brzezinski. Welcome.
Thank you and good morning. So as, as you mentioned, my name is Jennifer Brzezinski and I'm the Program Director at Ottawa County Community Action Agency. And I guess I'll wait for the PowerPoint to load up. There it is. Okay, so below you'll see our mission statement. We aim to reduce the effects of financial hardships by promoting self-sufficiency and empowering individuals and families to achieve economic independence. I felt like it was important to highlight what our mission is. Move this, right? Okay, perfect. So just a small history lesson. So community action began back in nineteen sixty-four as part of the War on Poverty and the Economic Opportunity Act of nineteen sixty-four. And a nice quote that I found from this act, "The United States can achieve its full economic and social potential as a nation only if every individual has the opportunity to contribute to the full extent of his capabilities and to participate in the workings of our society." I thought that was a really nice quote and something that you'll see in our agency is with our advisory board. We lift up the voices of our low-income population by having them serve on the board in the consumer sector. We also invite any of our clients to help by volunteering in some of our programs. So that is, you know, how we lift up those voices and get those individuals involved. So moving on to our budget, so numbers vary. You'll see a huge spike, of course, in two thousand and twenty due to COVID. And we received CARES grants that helped individuals with utility payments and other structural pieces in our agency. And then, you know, it's starting to die down a little bit with funding because CARES funding ended in two thousand and twenty-two. But those numbers are steadily rising a little bit again because we received a large amount of funding for our weatherization program, so that's growing, which is very exciting. And then program staff, something I like to brag about with our team. You'll see in one of the next slides that we have a number of grants that we manage. Every grant has rules, restrictions, a lot to manage, and we do that with a very small staff size. So my team is amazing. In the point three, that you'll see, that is to recognize our fiscal staff member. So she is employed by fiscal and part of her time is devoted to our agency to manage all of the complexities of all of our grants and she does a phenomenal job. So we are at seven point three and then we are in the hiring process, so we will be at eight point three for this year. So this next slide, I know it's very difficult to read, but again, the intent of this is just to show all of the different programs we have, but then also all of the different funding sources. So things ebb and flow quite frequently in our agency. I think I mentioned this before, but we're not county-funded. Everything that we do is state and federal grants. So you'll see a list of those. And then the main programs that we oversee are in the areas of housing, food, there's admin and then utilities. And then we have some other smaller programs that we run as well. And I should mention, because there's some confusion, confusion in regards to housing. We don't provide any housing for those that are homeless or looking for apartments. The housing services that we provide are to educate homeowners on energy efficiency. And then also, we do some how, housing quality standards inspections for those that are housed, to make sure their apartments are safe. And then also our weatherization program that helps with, again, energy efficiency for homeowners and renters. So this chart is the federal poverty guidelines. So as I mentioned before, our programs have a variety of different rules and one of those is income eligibility. So that's gonna vary. So our, the federal poverty level showing a hundred percent, that's what that first row is. And then the next is our senior food program. And that is at a hundred and thirty percent of federal poverty level. So I just want to highlight that, um, income, just to kind of give some perspective on this. So, um, the income for this, for a family size of one is seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That is an equivalent of somebody making eight dollars and forty-nine cents an hour. So, um, very interesting, the, um, the percentages there and, and who we serve. And then thinking about a family of four, that would be if both parents were making, um, thirteen thirty-four an hour. So we serve a variety of individuals, whether it be seniors on social security. It could be those that are working, um, maybe single parent households. It really does, um, depend on the situation. So then, um, our assistance totals, um, and again, this information is from last year. For our utility assistance program, we served a hundred and forty-five households. Um, in our weatherization program, we serve nineteen, um, that number is going to spike, um, quite a bit. Um, our quota, um, is currently at around ninety. So that program, um, is, is growing exponentially. Food assistance for our seniors, we served three hundred, we served three hundred and thirty households on average per month. We have a, um, emergency food assistance program, um, that serves, um, around twelve hundred individuals per quarter. Um, and that's just an average amount. Um, we don't collect a ton of data on each individual that serve because they're going to the food pantries. So we just collect, um, number of individuals that are served for that. So, um, the overall number that you see, the almost two thousand that we serve could be, um, a lot higher than that. Um, and then other programs would, um, incorporate, um, our home rehab program. We also have, um, Lower My Bill that does some education in home. Um, then we also offered a tax program last year as well. Um, so as again, I mentioned, um, because we rely on, um, grants, um, our Walk for Warmth is our, um, fundraiser or one fundraiser for the year. Um, we hold it every year. Um, this year it was at a new location at EB Construction. Um, I know we had a couple attendees here, um, and we got really wonderful feedback. We had it, um, at the window on the waterfront. It was a gorgeous day. And the, I think in the packet, the number that you're going to see is before we did some final calculations. So to date, we've raised just under eleven thousand dollars. Um, and we had a hundred and six walkers. Um, we've seen a, a difference since COVID. Those numbers were like between two and three hundred on average. So we know that that's changed quite a bit. Donations were also down. Um, last year we were close to thirty thousand dollars. So we're at about a third of that this year. So we're going to, you know, work year round to come up with different ideas of how we can promote the event. Um, do some year round fundraising so that we can keep our utility assistance program going. I should mention that this primarily funds utilities. As I mentioned, we have so many grants, but with those come a lot of restrictions. So if somebody is at two hundred and one percent of federal poverty, technically they're not eligible for the grant funding. So those are individuals that we like to help out because they just barely missed the cutoff. So we try to extend, um, the help that we're able to provide to, um, the community. So something else that's really, um, important to us is community partnerships. So last year we had, um, sixty-seven, uh, partner organizations and that varies. Nonprofit, maybe businesses, faith-based government. Some of the businesses that we work with, um, would be contractors for our weatherization program. We also have really great partnerships with local nonprofits here. A lot of, um, housing entities here, um, that support us and we support them as well. Um, and in addition, um, over a thousand volunteer hours. So, um, primarily our food programs are ones that are, are difficult to run because a lot, it takes a lot of hands, um, to feed so many people. So, um, it's really important that we have support from our volunteers. Um, and as I mentioned before, we also, some of our volunteers are those that are served in the programs as well. Um, I just wanted to highlight a couple of our programs. Some really great things that are happening, um, for our senior food program. So we began a partnership with DoorDash, um, late, um, last calendar year. And we're seeing, um, although there is cost associated with that partnership, we've seen a rise in, um, participants for the program. So, um, what DoorDash does is they take the boxes that we packed with food and they deliver them straight to the seniors' door, um, which is really important for that population because we have a lot of individuals that are homebound. Um, it's very difficult to secure volunteers every month to get food delivered directly to them. So what we're seeing thus far is before we had this partnership, we were serving about two hundred and fifty individuals. After DoorDash, we're seeing three thirty. Um, so this is huge because, um, we, the amount of funding that we get is determined on caseload and caseload is number of seniors served. So our caseload is three hundred and twenty-five. So we're exceeding that number. If we continue to exceed that number, then we can, um, receive more funding, which is really exciting. In addition, um, we are the top distributing agency in the state. So we are the one that is, you know, meeting that quota, exceeding that quota. Um, and this partnership with DoorDash has a lot to do with that. So very exciting things happening there. Um, so I also want to highlight, um, some, um, research work that, um, our food coordinator, uh, Megan Quantes did. She received her master's in public health this last year or the beginning of this year, I believe. And she did, um, a study for, um, individuals in our senior food program. Um, and the results were very interesting. We were always kind of questioning, you know, are people using this food? How important is it? Uh, we know that it's, you know, shelf-stable items, um, pantry things. So not maybe as, um, desired as fresh fruits and veggies and things that we're not able to provide. Um, and she saw some interesting things. Over two thirds of the participants reported that it's reducing their monthly grocery bill, either always or frequently. Um, also the longer that participants have been in the program, the greater the levels of their food security is, which is huge. That's what we're trying to accomplish with this program. Most participants reported that when they miss a distribution, they worry about having enough food. So we know that it's very essential for them to get this box. Um, and then the top three barriers that were reported to receiving the food, um, are personal health, transportation and the physical ability to lift and carry the box. So I think that data really fed into how important that partnership with DoorDash is. Again, as I mentioned, there is a cost associated, but at the end of the day, if we're feeding seniors and we're alleviating some of these barriers, then we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing for that program. Um, and then moving on to, uh, weatherization, again, I mentioned that that program, um, is, uh, receiving more funding in the next five years. So again, weatherization, I think there's just a lot of misperception about what that is. People think window and door program. Um, and actually, um, the most cost-effective thing that we can do in homes are things like caulking, weather stripping. Those are things that really help save homeowners and renters, um, in their energy bill. Um, so different measures that we would do, um, some of these I mentioned already, but, um, we're doing things like, um, having contractors, um, come in and do the LED light bulbs. Um, we're checking carbon monoxide detectors, um, installing bath fans. We're checking out things like mold and mildew. So really we're, um, trying to improve the overall health and safety of the home in addition to lowering, um, utility bill costs for our, our clients. Um, and this data is, um, from the Department of Energy. So this is national. So, um, every dollar that's invested in weatherization, um, is a dollar seventy-two, um, generated in energy benefits and two dollars and seventy-eight cents in non-energy benefits. And other benefits that I mentioned, um, energy, uh, water cost savings, um, lower cost for health, for health in the home, and then also, um, just lower utility payments in general. Some homes we go into, we identify some health things that the family might not have been aware of. So you could have a small child in the home with asthma and come to find out there's mold and mildew in the home. So, um, it's nice that we're able to get eyes on. That's one of the programs where we can physically go into the home, see what's happening and be able to identify any barriers that the client has or things that are happening in the home that we can help remediate for them with the weatherization program. Um, and then lastly, um, customer satisfaction. Again, I like to brag about, um, our team. So this, um, was of, as of August twenty-two. We, during that year, we tried to switch over to, um, a survey that was a little bit easier for our clients to fill out rather than paper. And we put it right in our email signature so that people can click on the link, um, and give us some feedback. So as of this time, there were seventy-nine responses. Um, and ninety-seven percent of those that responded stated they would refer others to our agency. And as you can see from the bar charts below, um, the vast majority of people would agree that they were treated with dignity and respect. And the majority were also satisfied with the experience that they received from our agency. Um, so I know data is important, but I also like to tell these stories because I feel like it really talks about the work that we do. We had a family of four. Both parents were working and then there were some health issues that came along. And, uh, one of the parents was no longer able to work. So one income. They reached out for some assistance with, um, their utilities. And from that conversation, they were then referred to our weatherization program. Through that program, um, we were able to help with, um, windows, um, some remediation of mold and mildew. Um, and then we also helped with some of the roof leaks that they had in their home as well. And through the program, they were able to, um, receive cost savings, um, with their energy bill through getting a new furnace, water heater and insulation in the home. So, um, really exciting stuff that's happening. Again, like I said, data is really important, but, uh, when you hear about these success stories with our families and the way that we're able to, um, kind of walk alongside them and provide them a number of different services. It's just, it's really exciting work that we do. So, um, I think that is all, oh, one last slide. So looking forward, um, we did our strategic plan in twenty twenty-two with the help of Strategic Impact Department. Um, and we identified five goals that we're going to work on over the next five years. So one is creating a brand that clearly conveys who OCCAA is and what, um, services we provide. I've mentioned this before, we get confused with Community Action House quite often. So we have talked about ways that we can, um, simplify our name, um, possibly just using the acronym of OCA. And also help, um, you know, let people know exactly what we do and what our brand conveys. We also want to improve, um, the data that we have. So some of the data system or one of the main data systems we use is, is pretty outdated. And the state, um, our main funder is working on a new data system. So hopefully, um, we're able to improve that data that we can share with the community, um, to talk about more of our programs and solutions to those programs. We want to continue developing strategic partnerships with other organizations. Again, that's one of our major strengths. We just want to continue working with those agencies and, and strengthen those partnerships that we have. We want to work on increasing board volunteer and client participation. As I mentioned early on, that's a really big part of what we do in community action is lift up those voices and, um, lift up those that can pour back into our program by volunteering, being on our board and doing other activities with us. And then lastly, um, obtaining other, um, sustainable and more flexible funding streams. Grants, um, have a lot of requirements. So when we have dollars like Walk for Warmth, it makes it a little bit easier for us to determine what the best thing is to do with that money and who we can serve. So we plan to continue looking into different options for that as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have questions for Jennifer?
Just a comment.
With your bottom line.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank you for the Walk for Warmth event. That was such a special time together. That was my first one and, uh, great community, uh, involvement as far as the ones that I got to visit with.
Thank you.
A lot of little furry friends that were along for the walk as well. So great chance to take your family out and your pets out. So I just want to really encourage the public to, uh, put that on their calendar next year. And, uh, I think you'd have a great time. It's in a beautiful location. Windows on the water, waterfront. But I also wanted to just really acknowledge the holistic, uh, way that you're approaching these needs. You know, a lot of times when you find people that have gone through hard times, their, their hearts have been, you know, kind of hardened by that experience of what they've gone through. And it seems like you've really worked to engage with them in a loving, kind, respectful way from the data that we're seeing, uh, through multiple, I mean, sixty-seven partner organizations, multiple different ways to really address them in a way that relates to them and, and, you know, feed them, warm them up, you know, help them get educated on how to help their house to stay warm, to work more efficiently, to put more income back in their pockets, their savings. You're, you're doing things that opens them back up to get them healthy again, get them back on track. So I just, I really appreciate that approach and, and your way of engaging the entire public. I mean, your, your sixty-seven partner organizations is not an easy feat to pull off. So, uh, yeah, just thank you for this. I think this is, uh, somewhat overlooked a little bit as far as, you know, I've lived here for a while and wasn't as familiar as I am now. So I'm very grateful to know about you and, and point more people towards you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And again, I have to give it back to my team, um, to do all that with seven people. They're working very, very hard every day. Um, and they care about every person that walks through the door. So, um, big kudos to them.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Hey, we'll move to ten F, the Michigan State Extension Annual Report with District Coordinator Erin Moore. Welcome.
Actually, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I am not Erin Moore. My name is Matt Shane. I am the Associate Director for Field Operations for MSU Extension. I know that I had the opportunity to introduce myself to several of you at New Commissioner School back in December. So I appreciate being able to present to you today on behalf of Erin, who regrets not being able to be here. But, um, thank you for allowing us to share our presentation nonetheless. Just want to spend a few minutes providing some highlights to you for the work that MSU Extension is doing in Ottawa County. And, uh, start by just kind of introducing you to our mission, which is to help people improve their lives by bringing the vast resources and knowledge of Michigan State University, uh, directly to the individuals and businesses. And we do that by connecting in a variety of ways with partners, constituents and others throughout, um, the counties uh, in Michigan, including Ottawa. So with that, uh, want to talk a little bit about the highlights that we've had, uh, working in Ottawa County over the last year. We have, um, served directly for over four thousand residents in the county. In addition, that's a hundred and seventeen direct programming contacts, uh, that have happened here in the county, not to mention the vast array of online and other experiences that, uh, folks have participated outside of the county. We have twenty-eight active four-H clubs and we also have, we have an online system called Ask Extension. And through that, uh, process, folks can submit, uh, can submit questions to us that we have the appropriate experts address at the given time. And so we've answered a hundred and fifty-nine of those in the last year. Our partnership to Ottawa County, as well as the other counties across the state, is very important to us in MSU Extension. We value that relationship and partnership, uh, the ability to have offices in each county, staffing in each county to be able to address local needs, uh, as they arise is very important to us. So we appreciate that connection and investment that the county makes. Uh, you can see in this slide here that we partner with Ottawa County for four point five FTEs of staffing for MSU Extension. We also have eleven and a half FTEs of staff that are housed here in Ottawa County, um, that we provide through various, uh, state, federal and grant funding opportunities to bring those staff to you. In addition to that, we have access to a network of dozens of other university employees, extension employees that can provide direct services to residents of the county as those needs arise and as we need additional resources to bring to bear on those specific opportunities within the county. We also, uh, work with a number of grants. I won't go through each one of those here, but can see that we do have a number of grants that we, uh, apply for and bring additional resources to, to the county and across the state on specific projects. Uh, we do those through things like C-grants. We have grants. We have grants in our areas of generating research extension and to meet economic and environmental needs, which is Project Green. So that's kind of our plant-based industries. The Michigan Alliance for Animal Agriculture is an area that we work in for specifically agricultural areas around livestock topics and things of that nature. You can see also C-grants and a host of other programs that we work with and grant-based programming throughout the county. I will show a brief video here that highlights some of our ag programs and it may need a little bit of assistance in clicking on the link in the center here of that particular slide. If somebody could help me with that, there should be a link or a in this slide, there's a, in the center of the slide, there should be a play button that is highlighted. I know we tested it. There you go.
Agriculture has deep roots within MSU Extension. Today, the industry plays a prominent and growing role in the state's economy and a high priority for our programming. We support Michigan's farmers and growers by helping them produce a safe and abundant food supply. Through our work in agriculture and agribusiness, MSU Extension focuses on animal health and well-being, fruit, vegetable and crop production, ornamental plants, sustainability and profitability, gardening and farm management. As a result, MSU Extension helps farmers and growers create profitable and efficient business and production practices, better manage financial risks and care for personal, family and employee mental health. MSU Extension also supports the agriculture industry through conservation practices, protecting water resources, reducing pesticide and fertilizer use. More than thirty five hundred volunteers give their time to MSU Extension agricultural programs each year, serving communities through programs like Extension Master Gardener, Breakfast on the Farm and more.
So as you're probably all very aware, Michigan is the second most agriculturally diverse state in the in the nation. And through the College of Ag and Natural Resources and some other resources that we've talked about, we've also kind of added an amendment to that, that we are the first most agriculturally diverse state diverse state in the nation with a reliable source of water. So this industry is very important to the state of Michigan and Ottawa County is no exception. They are one of the most agriculturally diverse counties in Michigan, which means one of the most agriculturally diverse counties in the nation. So proud heritage certainly, and we want to do everything we can to support, to support that work. So in a couple of areas that we have specifically highlighted here for you today is, as you've learned from a previous presentation from Mark Shinborn, Ottawa County Farm Bureau President, is that the proximity to the lakes here makes the soil particularly excellent for growing blueberries, as you're well aware. So it's an important agricultural economy to the agricultural economy in Ottawa County. Blueberry production, however, with it comes many challenges. And so the primary being staying on top of pest management. And that's a role that we take pride in providing resources for you as a county to train and educate producers on IPMs and how to manage that integrated pest management and how to manage that risk. We play a role also in supporting the greenhouse and ornamental horticulture industry with annual trainings that help to boost and mitigate risks. Some of those trainings are around biological controls, greenhouse lighting, root zone management, things of that nature. Last year, we were very excited to hire a new Christmas tree educator in the area to help with weed management and Christmas trees. In addition to herbicide application and other tree selection varieties, things of that nature. Also, I have invited with me today Martine Manuel, who's going to talk to you a little bit about dairy education in the county, and then I'll finish up with just a couple other slides. So.
Hello, my name is Martine Mongwall. I'm happy to work at, live at and serve Ottawa County as a dairy extension educator, mainly serving farmers, their employees and their cows in any way we can. In front of you, you have an example of some of the programs that have occurred right here in Ottawa County, serving farmers here. Those include milker training, parlor performance evaluations and feed program evaluations where we try to maximize efficiencies to help producers stay in business and also managing jeans for profitability, which is programs that are aimed at the consultants that are serving and supporting these farmers. So through the university, we get prime access to knowledge, research and others that we, as a bridge, we pass forward to those that are supporting farmers as well. Now, I want to mention two main things because I describe my work as having an impact, but sometimes that impact, we can measure it. And these are some of the examples that we have measured. Through our feeding assessment here in Ottawa County, we have performed at least three. This is only running from a year where we got grant from state funding and we apply that here in Ottawa County. Some of our recommendations can lead to a farm saving over fifty thousand dollars a month by just changing the way they do different things. And we can pick those changes, making these evaluations. Another concrete example of our impact is the parlor performance that we go to parlors, evaluate milking procedures, their equipment, their train, their milkers, et cetera, to maximize again their efficiency. Through our work, farms have been able to increase the herd sometimes without adding any time to their clock or increase the quality, which maximizes the value of their product. Those lead for more income and so forth, more sustainability from these farmers to stay in business. Now, the main point I want to make today that there's an impact from our work, or at least my work, that there's no way to measure it. I always look at ourselves as serving as a bridge to provide information with boots on the ground. I work, like I said, here in Ottawa County, if I'm not in my office, I'm likely out on a farm. That rich allowed, for example, last year, one Ottawa County farmer had a granddaughter that's interested in farming. Here in MSU, we have a program that takes high school kids that are interested in farming and we provide them with cutting-edge resources to help them develop. There was no way that farmer could have accessed that program or learn about it without me being on a meeting with just papers. Okay, that way we were able to help and support that farmer and his granddaughter. She got registered. We helped her in her application and she got access and participated on that program. There's no way to measure that impact. Where we're training the next generation to come back to the farm. Another one that we are unable to measure is the support we provide as far as employee management. We know that there's a big language barrier with some of the employees that we have working on farms. And here at MSU Extension, we pride ourselves to be able to go out in farms and help farmers bridge that gap, whether that's through training, developing their workforce, participating in employee evaluations, helping them translate in protocols and policies and procedures so they can make the most out of the labor they have and make sure that they stay in business. I'll be happy to answer any questions, whether that's here or just popping to our office. I'll be happy to receive you and or take you out in farms if you need to. Thank you.
One other program area that I like to highlight just briefly is the Michigan C-grant program. And so we have several several C-grant educators around the state and fortunate to have one here in Ottawa County as well. Couple of events that we've hosted here in the last year is one called Cops and Bobbers, which is an opportunity for youth to get engaged with fishing and conservation and water safety. So we've done this in partnership with Parks and Rec and the Sheriff's Department here in Ottawa County. And the most recent program, we had over sixty participants in that. And then in the BioBlitz Program, which is an opportunity to partner with, again, Parks and Rec in working on fish identification, the science and water quality, you know, working with families and students and community members to understand the biodiversity of our water systems across the state. And so we had a hundred participants at this particular program as well. Also, we're really excited to introduce to you Tyler Lidgard, who's our new four H program coordinator as of late in two thousand and twenty-two. She's really working hard to get on board and get up to speed with the program and recruiting new volunteers and members, but she's currently taking on the management of our twenty eight active four H clubs here in the county and our four hundred and eighty-three enrolled youth. And we're really excited to have her on board and look forward to the great things that she's going to be doing. As you can, as you can see, and I'm sure you heard from having Martine here, it's always best to hear directly from those that are doing the work in the county. So we would welcome any opportunity to to have you come down and engage with them or have us come back to have them tell you directly more about the work that they're doing. But with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have about MSU Extension. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Meadama?
Thanks for being here today. I am just wondering, do you know what percentage of farmers are knowledgeable about MSU Extension and how many participate with services? And how is the word put out there to the farmers in Ottawa County?
Sure. Martine, do you want to address that?
Well, it's dairy side because again, that's what I work on. We try to reach them both, like I said, physical papers and flyers that go directly to the mail of the farms. We also have email database that we receive from different programs they have attended to. We also have social groups in social media that are closed for farmers, whether those are young farmers. We also have online programs that they can access through their phone. So we are trying to be as accessible as we can. And a main thing working with farmers is we, I typically pride myself that I work on their time. So that means that I go to the farm whenever they can receive me, whether that's a Saturday, two AM or five AM or whatever it is, we work on their clock. As far as farms, we have about thirty nine licensed farms, dairy farms here in Ottawa County. And we have worked directly with boots on the ground with at least twenty of those, at least in my five years that I've been here. But that numbers, we continue to develop and grow.
And I would just add briefly to that, that we really have no way to quantify who doesn't know about us, but what we do is we work really carefully with all of our state, local and other partners who serve the agricultural industry. So Farm Bureau locally, other ag-serving entities like NRCS and Farm Service Agency and others, so that we work very closely on that. So when the regulatory end, maybe it's an M-DART issue, right to farm issue or something with a farm, then they often call us and alert us to that so that we can help them with the educational side of helping to mitigate whatever challenge there is.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you again for the opportunity. Have a good day.
Okay, moving on to item eleven, public comment.
Here in Obit Spring Lake Village, I often take notes during meetings because it both helps me digest a variety of information I offered here. Sometimes it also helps me identify certain themes that I might happen to hear in the course of that meeting. So with that in mind, I'd like to offer you the summary of what I will take away from this meeting today. And I'll give you a few of the keywords that I was focusing on. So we started with the invocation. In that invocation, here were some of the themes I gleaned that we all recognize the desire that we share for living an abundant life and one with the experiences of joy. And I thought to myself, yes, as an experience, as a human being, both as one who's tried to live faithfully to my commitment to follow Christ and just as a human being, that is exactly my desire and what I hope that we all share for each other as well, not just for ourselves. And I mean that not only in my own local congregation, but in our greater community. And then as the person who gave the fifty eighth district court report reminded us, we thrive as community when we operate out of the vision of us, not us versus them. And I thought that was striking because he's talking about the criminal justice system. Yet he still sees the truth of that. We all thrive when we bring people back into our community to restore to justice. Speaking of community, again, our HR spokesperson reminded us that our most valuable resource is our county employees. Yeah, we heard today, most unfortunately, from one employee whose comments about her diminished experience since the new board and county administrator assumed their roles might well bode ill across a greater swath of that county employee population. So I urge the board that they can hear those kinds of concerns without becoming defensive and honestly evaluate what they could do better to alleviate morale issues. Speaking to another concern brought to our attention via the county prosecutor's report, I was struck by the sheer number and disproportionately high percentage of domestic violence crimes in this county. Does anyone else see a dissonance between the frequent references we hear in this room to Ottawa as a conservative Christian county and the high number of domestic violence cases? Or perhaps, rather than seeing only a jarring dissonance, honest reflection could allow us to see a possible through line conducting, connecting the traditional patriarchal structure and ideology predominant in Christianity. I wish to restate at this point my own identification as a Christian, but I confess, I was struck by a commenter earlier today stating she is so proud to be a Christian. I have never once personally contemplated why I would or should feel proud about my faith and the way she seemed to indicate. And especially when I consider the harm of patriarchy within the Christian church I myself have experienced. But self-critical and committed to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to give public comment? Are there any online? We do have one more in the room. Come on forward. Please introduce yourself. Maybe move the microphone a little bit. All right.
I'll stand like this.
Three minutes.
I'm Jim Kuiper from Holland Township and this was a great meeting. We had a lot of comments from the public, a lot that we can digest over time. And I appreciate each one of you for all the effort you put into your elected positions. That's about it, really. I'll restate my main reason for being involved in politics is my concern for the type of culture that we have and in which we're going to grow our youngsters. My kids, my grandkids, my great-grandkids, we had a get-together on Easter. It was wonderful. And just thinking about the future that they are going to enjoy living in Ottawa County. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else for public comment? We will move to twelve A, Report from County Administrator, Administrator Gibbs.
Thank you, Chairman Moss. I'm happy to report that things are moving. There's a lot of moving parts and we are keeping them all operating and going in the right direction. So I'm happy about that. And I want to give thanks again to our great staff, to our great directors and managers and to our elected officials who are doing wonderful. I always describe what we're doing as ninety-nine-one. Ninety-nine percent of things are going great. There may be one percent of things we need to change. We will do that in an orderly process. So folks are continuing to keep the ninety-nine percent moving and I like to see that. I'm continuing my engagement, both at the director level, having my regular one-on-ones with all the directors and the elected officials, seeing what I can do to better serve them and just being sure that I understand their needs and where they're at. So that is a good process that's continuing as I deepen those relationships, continuing to do many brown bag launches with many departments all around the county. So far, there has been four brown bag launches that I've done. One at Grand Haven Courthouse, one at Hudsonville Courthouse, one here in the administration building and one at Juvenile Services across the street. All four were well-attended. We had employees come and usually I just introduce myself and then employees can ask any question they want whatsoever. And we just have a really good discussion. So I've been really happy about those. There is twenty-seven or more brown bags scheduled for this year. There may be even more than that that we end up putting on the schedule. That comes out to about one per week for the rest of the year. To address a comment that was made by a public commenter, there are three CMH brown bags scheduled for the rest of this year. So those are actually on the calendar. What was shared was not accurate. That individual did come to the brown bag that was here in this building, which any employees welcome to come to any brown bag anywhere. So that individual did come to the brown bag and they were able to share their opinion. So I just wanted to put that out there. Further, it was said that I made a comment about the person's political affiliation. Actually, I was asked that by the person. They asked me about politics and everything like that. So that was in response to a question that I was asked. I am the county administrator for everybody in my county. It doesn't matter if they're Republican or Democrats. And I'll talk to anyone, work with anyone as long as reasonable and in coordination with the board. So I do not see things on a partisan basis. I do not see the employees and the workforce and the staff on a partisan basis. So just wanted to dispel that and let you know that, again, for CMH in particular, Community and Mental Health, three brown bags coming up, twenty-seven brown bags for the rest of the year, almost one per week. I really enjoy those. We will continue those. I want to put myself there with the employees. They can see me and ask questions in an open forum. They can ask whatever they want. We're working, as everyone knows, with both the board as well as myself, accountability and transparency. And I think we're having some good momentum there. And one of the things I've requested and that we're working on is as part of the budget process, we want to see a list we want to see a list of, for example, all the grants that we're working with as a county as a part of the budget process so that we can have a comprehensive look at what's coming in and from where, whether it's a state or the federal government um and what kind of things those brands are being used on, whether it's personnel or programs. I think that's a very healthy thing for the commissioners and myself to look at, just to make sure that the taxpayers have some oversight, understanding of um what kind of grants are coming in. So I'm very excited about that. Again, the departments have been very willing and cooperative in that process. Uh, the news has been reporting a lot about um replacing my executive assistant. Uh, the executive assistant did leave, so I'm replacing um shocker. Wow, replacing a position. How crazy. Um, and that's a normal thing that happens in America every day. I did upgrade the position because I do want higher level functionality out of that position uh so that I can delegate more uh to that position and focus myself on high-level tasks that I need to be focusing on. Um, as the administrator, I think that'll be a great process. I think that is the proper uh way of operation uh for a position like this. I'm very excited about that. Um, I know that there's been talk about having a hard time recruiting people. We have over twenty applications for that position and thus far they're coming in at a good pace. So we'll have no trouble whatsoever um filling that position with someone who's very qualified. So we'll be uh wrapping up on the interview process and selection on that here very soon. So that is going well. Uh, thank you. Uh, the Housing Commission, uh as I am sitting on that, I just want to report that it's going well. Uh, we do see a trend across the country and here in Michigan of uh of nonprofits, both at a county and regional level, kind of growing really, really large. And sometimes, at least from the way I see things, usurping the role of elected officials. Um, I, I think that is not a good trend. I think that anything relating to housing policy, such as what kind of housing developments are going to be coming into a community, should be something that's up to the local community to decide. And the elected officials should have a big say in that matter because if the people don't like the direction that it's going, they could always pick someone else. I think that's what it means to live in a constitutional democratic republic is having accountability to elected officials on such matters. So uh we're having several meetings over the coming weeks to make sure that we are at the table for meetings with uh any nonprofits that are doing big housing work to make sure that elected officials and uh the board specifically here um are at least part of that conversation and are having some oversight input into that process. Uh, we don't want to have the machine uh keep uh, keep going to the point that it steamrolls over people and steamrolls over elected officials. So that's a big priority we have on the Housing Commission and I think that is going well. We'll continue to be having good meetings on that. Uh, someone did mention uh the Family Justice Center, uh Susan Franklin, who shared earlier, uh Prosecutor Fisher shared as well. Um, I'd just like to thank them for being integral parts of the process of getting the new Family Justice Center ready so that when uh folks are ready to move into that, we know whose space is going to be where and how much space everyone's going to have and what will be left uh in the places that people are coming from. And then with the spaces that are being vacated, who's going to use those? Um, there's quite a lot to keep track of logistically in that. And if different folks have different opinions on what they'd like, it could be a really big problem. So I've been directing all the stakeholders, that is, the court administrators, the judges specifically to really be in constant communication with each other and to make sure that that's a smooth process. Um, and it is a smooth process. We have the issues resolved as far as where people are going to be going and coming from. So thank you also um to uh Clerk uh Robuck for, who's going to be involved in this process as well as his team has some movements. So appreciate everyone's involvement in that and people really having open communication to make sure that it's a smooth transition into the uh Family Justice Center. And we have several other initiatives um in many different departments we're looking at. And I would say the underlying theme uh we're looking at there is just getting a group of making sure we know what things cost, both as far as upfront capital costs as well as ongoing operating costs so that there's no surprises later on. And so that we're not having to do things like raise fees later on because we didn't know how much something was going to cost. Um, so that's been a, a big initiative of mine is to make sure that we're knowing um what things are looking like upfront in terms of cost. Yeah, and I think that's, that's the bulk of what I have for my update. Um, thus, me when I see.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. So anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Commissioner. We share that. Mr. Gibbs, I'm going to kind of just expound a little bit on what you're talking about the I know you said there's a conflict between elected officials and nonprofit uh construction uh organizations. Oh, there's, there's an example of the nonprofit world kind of usurping authority. I didn't quite.
Yeah, so for, for example, uh if there was a, a regional housing coalition that was set up and that was made up of nonprofits, that was going to try to decide a housing plan for, say, West Michigan, for example, that included Ottawa County, right? We want to make sure that it is not just nonprofits that are trying to decide what that housing plan would look like for Ottawa County. Want to make sure that the commissioners are also at the table as well, so that elected officials have a say in what that plan would look like. That's all I meant.
Okay. I mean, I mean, I was an elected official, was taken off the Housing Commission, so I'm not quite sure how that works through, but I appreciate that.
Well, you are a voting member of the commission and I'd love to inform you and keep you updated on such things that you have a say in that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions? All right. Thank you, Administrator Gibbs. Uh, seeing that we have reached the end of our agenda for the day, uh call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.